Good evening and welcome to the April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two carryover meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Commission Chair Daniel Weir. This is the second of two evenings scheduled for this month for our public hearings in April. Tonight, we'll be hearing two items. First, a proposal concerning development fund and related and similar fees. And second, updates to the Clarendon Sector Plan. The Commission will also cover routine commission and committee business following those two hearing items. At our initial hearing on Monday night, the Commission heard site plan amendments and other items related to the Penn Place site in National Landing. If you are here for that item, that was on Monday night. Some items required to share at this point. For the safety of our staff and residents, we are holding this meeting virtually. Welcome to our commissioners, to county staff, applicants, and community members who are joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the governor's executive orders, legislation adopted by the Virginia General Assembly and the county board's continuity of operation ordinance adopted in March, two thousand and twenty. Before we begin, I have a few specifics to orient everyone to our virtual environment. First, tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels twenty-five and ten eighty-five, Verizon Files Channels thirty-nine and forty, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. I understand that you can also use a phone number provided in the team's invite from Ms. Johnson. And registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you're called upon. And please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. And please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When you are called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself and activate your camera by clicking on the microphone and camera icons that are located on your meeting command bar. The moderator and other participants in the meeting do not have the ability to unmute you or to activate your camera. Once you've spoken, please turn your cameras off and re-mute yourself. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required, and we are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide at an in-person meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. A speaking timer will be displayed on screen by the clerk. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when thirty seconds are remaining. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters and commissioners who need technical assistance. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, for public comment, for questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned testimony period. And lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call tonight's first item?
Thank you, Chair. Our first item for the evening begins with item number two of our agenda. Proposed Resolution Pursuant to Code of Virginia to Increase Established Department of Community Planning Housing and Developments Fund Fees. We have our Planning Division Director Anthony Fusarelli, who will be presenting this item to us this evening.
Mr. Fusarelli.
Good evening, Mr. Weir, and thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Anthony Fusarelli with the Planning Division. Really briefly this evening, I'm here to reintroduce proposed changes to the zoning fee schedule and Inspection Services Division fee schedule that were in fact previously presented to the Planning Commission at its March meeting back on March ninth. At that time, as you'll recall, there was more fulsome presentation and discussion of the proposed fee changes. Nothing has changed to the proposal since that time. But it was determined that there was an oversight with the public notice for the March Planning Commission meeting. And so we have since properly advertised this item for an official public hearing by the Planning Commission for this evening so that the Planning Commission can take an official action before the county board considers this item later in April during its regular meeting. So as a very brief reminder, the proposed fee changes include several items. This would include a new fee for the review of landscape plans for one and two family dwellings. It would address technical corrections such as those related to phased development site plan amendments and site plan resubmission fees. And finally, it would include an inflationary increase of four percent and other changes to the Community Planning Housing and Developments Development Fund fees, as well as the Department Environmental Services Development-related fees as set forth in the attachments effective July one, two thousand and twenty-two, except as noted. So that concludes my prepared remarks for this evening. I know the Commission had some discussion and questions that were addressed back in March. If any additional questions have come up since that time, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusarelli. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
I apologize. I'm helping with some technical difficulties. We do not have any speakers on this item this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'm guessing that there are no Commissions who wish to speak, including Commissioner Leto Me, for the Transportation Commission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Leto Me. Are there any? The item is before the Commission then. Are there any members of the Commission who have questions? Commissioner Hughes, I'll go to you first.
Commissioner Weir, putting it all on. Mr. Fusarelli, I just like to confirm just for my own, for the public record, the fees charged by the Planning Division with respect to the fees being proposed to us this evening are cost recovery fees. They're not revenue fees fundamentally. Is that correct, my assumption?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Hughes. The fees, technically speaking, the fees that the Planning Division, that are associated with the Planning Division reviews, such as those related to site plan applications, sort of the four-point-one entitlement process and other related studies. Those actually go into the general, they're development-related, but they go into the general fund. So those are actually separate from the development fund within CPHD that is, that includes fees charged by zoning and inspection services. So those, those two divisions' fees are sort of a recovery-based fund, separate from the general fund. And so hopefully that helps address your question.
But understood. Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. Fusarelli. Commissioner Weir, I know that we got a letter from the Chamber of Commerce. Was that shared with all my other fellow commissioners as well?
Believe it was. Madam Clerk, can we, can I ask you to confirm that? I'm looking through.
Yes, let me see.
I have it from you, Madam Clerk, so yes.
Excellent. I guess Commissioner Weir, I plan to support the motion this evening. But I do want the record to stand that when I read the Chamber of Commerce's letter, I was somewhat disappointed. We, as a community, need to understand, look, folks, the world we're going to live in in the future is a little different than the world we lived in the past. And we've got top-line inflation sitting at seven-plus percent. And here we're putting in a four-percent raise. And I get that nobody wants to pay four-percent more for anything. I hate paying more for everything right now. But if we expect to continue to have top-rate staff and services across this county, we all are going to be asked to be, it's all going to come out, and that's just something to be understanding. Well, four percent is way more than anybody would like it to be. I just want to make the record show, look, top-line inflation right now is sitting close to eight. So I have no issue with this percentage-wise, and I encourage the Chamber, who should be more well-aware of the inflationary pressures across all of Arlington than anyone, that we are all having to buckle our seatbelts on this one. So with that, Commissioner Weir, I intend to support, but I just want the record to show that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Are there any other speakers on this item? Or any other commissioners, excuse me, I'm sorry, who wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion. Unless Commissioner Hughes, you've got us going back to you. Your hand is still up as well.
Drop it, drop it, drop his suss, I can't. There's a lot of lag, sorry.
I would, I'm going to entertain. I am looking again for Mr. Fusarelli. You sent a draft motion, and I'm just trying to find it, entertain it.
I'll read it. Let me pull it up, Commissioner Weir, like, so you don't have to, Chair.
Excuse me, can I ask Mr. Orr to please turn your camera off? Thank you.
Can we put it on the screen perhaps? If not, I'm pulling it up as we speak.
I, yeah, I've got it in just a second, Commissioner Hughes.
Commissioner Weir, Chair Weir, if it would be convenient, I can pull it up on the screen.
I think I've got it, Mr. Fusarelli. But once, I'm about to show, I'm about to put it on the screen, if you can confirm that this is, that this is the appropriate link, staff-recommended language.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Hughes, do you want to do the honors?
Oh, Mr. Chair. I move the Planning Commission recommend the county board amend the zoning fee schedule and Inspection Service Division fee schedule to adopt a new fee for the review of landscape plans for one and two family dwellings, to address technical corrections such as phased development site plan amendments and site plan resubmission fees, and to include an inflationary increase of four percent and other changes to the Department of Community Planning Housing and Developments CPHD Development Fund fees, including Department of Environmental Services, DES, development-related fees, except as noted, as set forth in Attachment A and B effective one, July, two thousand and twenty-two.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Gieran, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any commissioners who wish to offer any comment or discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Weir, for giving me the chance to make the motion and my previous comments for the record.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hughes. So I'll go down the roll. Commissioner Bagley.
I.
Commissioner Gieran.
Hi.
Commissioner Hughes.
Hi.
Commissioner Leto Me.
Hi.
Commissioner Patel.
Hi, hi.
Commissioner Peterson, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Sarley.
Hi.
Mr. Schroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Um, I.
And I vote I as well. Motion carries nine to zero. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item?
Yes, thank you. Item number three is the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-two Clarendon Sector Plan and update to the two thousand and six Sector Plan and associated amendments to the General Land Use Plan and the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance. Our planning staff, Brett Wallace, will be presenting this item this evening.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Bear with me for a second while I pull up my presentation. All right. Just to confirm, can everybody see the screen?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, again, good evening. My name is Brett Wallace. I'm with the Planning Division. Also joined this evening by other colleagues in the Planning Division and CPHD, DES and DPR. And we're here tonight to present the Clarendon Sector Plan update. Supporting tonight's presentation, you should have received links to posted documents and a staff report. These documents relate to the subject items, which include adoption of the following elements associated with clearing the sector plan update process, including, A, the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-two Clarendon Sector Plan and update to the two thousand and six Sector Plan, B, the General Land Use Map and Booklet Amendments, and C, the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Amendments to Articles three, nine, and eighteen, including maps nine-point-two-point-five through nine-point-two-point-twelve. Just a quick overview of the presentation. I'll try and be brief and focus on updates since the request to advertise, cover a little bit of the study background, and again, provide a summary of updates since the request to advertise, and provide a summary of the GLUP and zoning ordinance amendments, the commission review and community engagement, and conclude the presentation with staff recommendations. So just quickly on the study background, I'm sure most are familiar. Elements of the plan that were evaluated within the study area that you see on the slide here include land uses for private redevelopment, building height and form, transportation, including new streets, locations and designs, potential replacement of Fire Station Four and guidance for public spaces. And so the Sector Plan update is really a comprehensive update of the two thousand and six Sector Plan. The update will include updates to not only the text that's been posted online, but also exhibits maps and images, which again have been posted online as almost a strike through an underlined version, so the public can see the recommended changes. The final formatting of the plan will be done post-county board adoption, which would include potential updates to other images within the plan or other graphic design updates as needed, such as within the plan, there are existing images from two thousand and six that have been updated since in the past fifteen years, including updated aerial images and other updates as needed. So I'll just quickly provide a summary of the proposed updates to the Sector Plan since we last met with the Planning Commission last month for the request to advertise. So this presentation, as I mentioned earlier, is more focused on main areas of change since the request to advertise, including updates based on the county board direction, mainly focused on the county-owned site on Tenth Street. At the March County Board Meeting, staff reported out on the Planning Commission actions to preserve the Joyce Motors facade in situ and to indicate in the plan, a clear preference for the use of public land for government facilities. To maintain flexibility and to achieve a fire station, public space, and affordable housing, the county board directed staff at the March nineteenth meeting to include an additional fourth scenario that was also shared previously with the LRPC and community with a fire station co-located with housing on the county site. The advertisement was also amended to include this alternative, along with amended maps to reflect the scenario that I'll cover in a minute. Related to public space, the county board also requested that staff provide more information regarding the public spaces master plan guidance that might further influence recommendations for public space while considering other existing public spaces within the vicinity of the study area. At the Transportation Commission meeting on March twenty-eighth, the Commission voted unanimously to adopt the plan with an amendment to maintain a connection that was shown on the two thousand and six Streets map that's located between the North Side Social and the T and J Auto Shop. Staff has updated the map, and I'll cover that in more detail on upcoming slides. As I mentioned, last month, throughout the process, staff has been coordinating very closely with the fire department to understand their programming and spatial requirements. I just wanted to highlight again some of the important considerations when considering replacement onsite or offsite, and that the fire station must remain in Clarendon within no more than four to six blocks from the current site and locate it on Arterial Street. And really, the onsite fire station is the only option that's currently within the county's control.
Did I freeze or did Mr. Wallace freeze?
I think I've got this. Are you still seeing the slide?
I'm hearing you again, Mr. Wallace, and we're seeing the slide. We're seeing the Johnny Old Tenth Street site, Fire Station Four slide.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. So we're just outlining some of the considerations for the fire department. And really, just highlighting that the Sector Plan guidance for the fire station should be flexible to account for on- and off-site options that might arise in the future. So to allow flexibility for the future use of the site, staff is recommending amending the plan to allow for four alternative development scenarios. The one that was included based on county board direction on the left here that's highlighted, figure two-point-six, would be a fire station that's replaced onsite, co-located, could yield approximately two-hundred-and-sixty committed affordable units onsite. And I'll note on the next slide, looking at this in more detail, that this would be very difficult to achieve any amount of meaningful public open space on the ground plane due to some of the ground floor use requirements for both the residential use and the fire station. And I believe you've seen the other three scenarios shown here, including a standalone station, figure two-point-eight, which would be assuming relocation of the fire station with an affordable housing project and approximately two-hundred-and-eighteen committed affordable units. And then the final scenario would also assume relocation with conversion of the entire L-shaped park, or L-shaped site to a roughly one-acre park. So here, you're looking at the scenario that was directed by the county board to be included as a potential alternative here with co-location with housing. This is a scenario that we had shown previously throughout the LRPC process with the community and the committees. As you can see on the ground floor plan on the left, the amount of ground floor space that's required for the fire station along Tenth and Hudson Street with the pull-through bays, the apparatus, and the front apron that's exposed to the sky, and then the parking entrance that would be required for the fire station further north up on Hudson Street. But then to achieve a residential project or a co-location, it would logically be located on Irving and Tenth Street with potential residential parking and loading access off of Irving Street shown there with the yellow arrow. But we'd also have to consider residential lobby space, elevator core space, and also retail space that would be required along Tenth Street. So there's a lot of competing interest, a lot of design challenges that are, again, on the ground floor, which would, you know, create limited opportunity for public open space, at least on the ground floor level. In terms of housing on the county property, some continue to express opposition to land use scenarios that include residential uses on the county's Tenth Street site. As mentioned before, Clarendon has the fewest amount of committed affordable units in the RB corridor, which represents about three percent of the total CAFs. So a development scenario on the Tenth Street site with affordable housing under these two scenarios shown here could potentially yield approximately two-hundred-and-fifteen to two-hundred-and-sixty committed affordable units. And so to do so, to allow flexibility and to achieve a building form for either scenario that was shown on the previous slides, staff has provided an alternative map inset that's shown here on the bottom right in both the Sector Plan Update and also the Zoning Ordinance. And this is again per direction from the county board. As you can see, the heights would extend west to north Irving Street, and staff recommends a step back on Irving Street, which is consistent with the two thousand and six map that's shown on the left. And this alternative was also shared previously with the LRPC. Just running through some of the other maps that have been updated since the RTA, the receiving maps that's shown here was also amended to include the alternative shown on the bottom right to show additional density extending further west towards north Irving Street. The Use Mix Map alternative also shows residential for the entire block with the Verizon site identified as existing utilities. The alternative was also adjusted along Tenth and Irving. And finally, the frontage-type maps alternative extends the Tenth Street frontage down to north Irving Street as well. In response to the county board request for more information on public spaces within the vicinity of the study area, staff has provided an inventory of public spaces, sizes, and amenities within a half-mile radius from the study area. This info was also shared previously, excuse me, with the LRPC early on in the process. Currently, there are eleven county-owned parks and four privately-owned public spaces within a half-mile radius. These public spaces offer a wide range of amenities that support both recreational and casual-use activities from athletic fields and courts to playgrounds, picnic shelters, and casual-use spaces. For example, there are some larger parks such as Quincy Park, Hayes Park, and Lime Park that offer more active recreational opportunities, whereas some of the smaller parks in the vicinity are more urban plazas or smaller casual-use spaces. Going back to the Transportation Commission meeting, I will note that throughout the LRPC process and at the Transportation Commission meeting, we had heard a desire to maintain in the plan a future connection between the North Side Social and the T and J Auto Body Shop linking Wilson Boulevard to Fairfax Drive. The Transportation Commission also recommended that the plan indicate a mid-block crossing on Wilson Boulevard at this location, which is, would be opposite of the new Tenth Road on the opposite side of the street. Throughout the process, staff identified challenges with achieving a true public connection here due to the private ownership and lack of signalization here. Both, both of these buildings are identified for full building preservation in the two thousand and six Sector Plan, and additions to these buildings are not envisioned in the future. Several other constraints exist that would be needed to make this connection and crossing possible due to the number of traffic lanes and volume across Wilson Boulevard and mid-block crossing would need to be signalized, which would require removing utility conflicts. And so from staff's perspective, a future determination for a crossing here should be deferred until a specific proposal for adaptive reuse of these buildings is considered. And so staff has included some language in the Sector Plan text speaking to that point. I'll just quickly provide a quick overview of the GLUP and zoning ordinance amendments associated with the plan update, starting with the GLUP amendments on the top. The GLUP map will be adjusting the block and street locations and alignments to correspond to the built or planned conditions, several additions of triangle symbols for open, future public open spaces, and then changing designation from semi-public to public for an area that was located at the Clarendon Circle at the West End Plaza, which is now county-owned. Looking at the zoning ordinance amendments to sections 3, 9, and 18, staff is recommending modifying the use mix regulations to allow for hotel uses on private sites. Staff is also recommending flexibility for government facilities such as a by-right standalone fire station, which was shown in figure 2.17 earlier. And of course, the map changes also reflect recommendations for block structure and street locations, use mix, and building heights, and as you see on the bottom right, inclusion of the alternative map for the county's 10th Street site, which has affected five of the maps in the zoning ordinance, which were shown earlier. So just concluding with commission review and community engagement and staff recommendations. As mentioned earlier, the process began back in the fall of 2020. We had a number of meetings with LRPC and the zoning committee and multiple opportunities for online engagements. We were last here with the Planning Commission on March 9th for the request to advertise. We met with the Housing Commission on March the 10th. The request advertised with the county board was on the 19th of March. Again, we met with the Transportation Commission on the 28th. We're here tonight. Sorry for the typo. That should say April 6th. And then, next up, we're meeting with the Park and Recreation Commission on the 19th to provide an update prior to going to the county board for final adoption of the plan. So, staff is recommending adoption of the following elements associated with the Clarendon Sector Plan update, including adoption of the sector plan and associated GLUP and zoning ordinance amendments. So, that concludes staff's presentation. I have additional slides if needed, if the commissioners would like to discuss additional topics. But again, I wanted to keep this more focused to update since the request advertised, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Madam Quirk, I believe we have some public speakers on this issue.
Yes, we do. We have eight speakers, okay. Let me share my screen. Okay. Our first speaker for the evening is Bernard Byrne, followed by Stephen Markou.
Yes, hello. This is Bernard Byrne. You hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Byrne. Thank you.
Okay. We're really needing more emphasis on natural spaces here. You have a number of public spaces. You're talking about Fairfax Drive and several others. But, you know, they're not specific for natural areas. Now, the county, the staff just showed a picture of various parks and things around the area. Well, there are no natural areas in those parks. There are many tiny ones in some neighborhood parks. This is, this is characters of the whole RB corridor. You just connect that to a natural area anyways, except for very few places. So, there needs to be an emphasis for green space and natural areas to increase biofilia in this plan, which just isn't there. For example, or the other thing is, on all your maps and pictures, every public space is colored green. Well, a lot of these are going to be paved. That includes the map on page, it's on page 15. I mean, if they're not going to be really parks, green, don't make it that color. It's just deceptive. It's an important point, because the community board, they look at it, they, oh, a lot of it's green. It's not all going to be that. Now, for example, the planned so-called West End Plaza, which is west of Clarendon Circle and along Fairfax Drive, shouldn't be called a plaza. It should identify as West End Park or Western Natural Area or something like that to indicate that it really will be green. Right now, it's a plaza. Do we need plazas in that area? The answer is no. I mean, other than the fact these are increased stormwater runoff and things like that, you've got a plaza one block away, right next to Clarendon Metro Station, Clarendon Central SoCal Park. It used to be a park. Now it's supposed to possibly be a plaza. You've got another one that doesn't show up on your site. It's private, but it's on Georgia Main Eastern University on Fairfax Drive, a big wide paved plaza. Neither of these are used very often for recreation, for presentation, for programable experiences. You get programable things, cost money. So you really don't need plazas anymore, because you already have these two very closely, that area. So that public plaza should be changed to park, and make it clear. The, so that's basically what we're talking about. Make more, make specific recommendations in this thing to increase natural spaces and to convert that plaza, the West End Plaza to West End Park. Because that's, it says in the scriptures that West End Plaza. And we really just don't need another plaza there. I don't think it benefits anyone. It's just, plaza is just there for people generally who end up walking through, and that's about it. Yeah, I mean, Northside Social is near, but they could easily, I really don't like bicycling past that plaza, that whole area and seeing just mold grass or something like that. We really need natural spaces. And right through that area, past Northside Social, I see this mold grass and a few trees, and that area will become a plaza. Well, that will pave over this existing, open, green space. So that's a very important point. I just please emphasize it when you go through this and talk about changing, change of that language, particularly that West End Plaza, to make it into a West End Park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Markou, followed by Jane Green.
Hi. My name is Stephen Markou, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to express our support for the Clarendon Sector Plan. The existing plan was written all the way back in 2006, and it desperately needs to be updated in order to better serve the needs of the community today. One thing in it we appreciate is the change in step-back requirements from 20 feet to 10. While maintaining 10-foot step-backs is more restrictive than we'd like, it does represent a good compromise that will enable new buildings to make better and more efficient use of their available space relative to the existing plan. We'd like to have seen more density added to the area in the plan. It's a part of Clarendon that's run well behind the rest of the neighborhood. It continues to have many outdated structures in this western portion, but the additional densities that are in there will help bring more use to that part of the neighborhood. It'll revitalize those blocks, and it'll bring them more in line with the character of the rest of Clarendon. We would also like to thank the county for its consideration of the Joyce Motors site. Now, the approach taken as part of the proposed redevelopment of that site will incorporate the materials and name into the facade of the building, maintaining that essential historic resource for decades to come. Now, we recognize there's been some controversy over this aspect of the plan, and so it's important to note that the current building is not under historic preservation rules, and it could be torn down and replaced by another structure on a by-right basis to underwish to do so, as long as it was within the existing zoning ordinance. And so, this project really represents the best way to preserve it. Failure to allow this site to be a part of the planned redevelopment would take too many units away. It would make the parking and garage access unworkable, and it would render the whole project financially infeasible. So the planned redevelopment, it's consistent with the type of walkable, mixed-use urban neighborhood that the county needs just two blocks away from a metro station. Clarendon's come a long way over the years, and the western part of the neighborhood has so much potential to make it even better. We really thank all of you for your work on this plan, and we respectfully ask that you recommend its passage to the county board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jane Green, followed by David Orr.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Jane Green. I am here representing the Alliance for Housing Solutions. The Clarendon Sector Plan provides an opportunity to expand the county's overall housing supply while creating a vibrant neighborhood around the Clarendon Metro Station. This neighborhood will be further enhanced by the inclusion of affordable housing. So the Alliance for Housing Solutions is supportive of the board's decision to include a fourth scenario that allows for co-location of committed affordable housing along with the 10th, the fire station number four at the 10th Street site. And we concur with the recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Commission on Housing that recommends this aspect of the sector plan as well. And I hope today that the Planning Commission will endorse and recommend this co-location opportunity as one of the scenarios in the updated sector plan. The Affordable Housing Master Plan Implementation Framework has indicated that the county will need to finance approximately 450 new committed affordable housing units each year for the next 19 years to meet production and preservation goals in the Affordable Housing Master Plan. So this requires using every opportunity to prioritize affordable housing. The staff report has further emphasized, oh, sorry, the Affordable Housing Master Plan Report has emphasized the importance of co-location as one of the strategies, so we can include affordable housing along all county facilities. Or not all, but has the option for all county facilities. And since the Affordable Housing Master Plan was first adopted in 2015, no county facility has incorporated affordable housing. So we need to have opportunities when we have the land to support affordable housing to include co-location. As was mentioned earlier, this area of Clarendon has, and this area of the Roslyn-Bolston corridor has a very small number, only 3% of the current committed affordable units. So this 10th Street site is an opportunity to address Arlington's goal to distribute committed affordable housing more equitably throughout the county. I know the neighborhood is very interested in open space and public space. I hope that, you know, if there is an opportunity to co-locate housing with the tents, with the fire station four, there can also be public space not on the ground level. And then I think we should also look at better utilizing the 11th Street Park, which is only a block or two away, which is currently pretty underutilized as open space and could be more activated and provide for community needs. So, thank you very much for supporting this Clarendon Sector Plan update overall, and I hope that the Planning Commission today will endorse the housing and specifically the fourth option. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
David Orr is followed by Dave Shuts.
Hey, this is Ryan Orr. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of David, if that's okay.
Okay.
Can I, is it possible to share my screen of a few slides?
Not at this time. We would have needed to make arrangements for that, sir.
Okay, I'll do my best to get through this then. Thank you for hearing us. I have a little presentation with some graphics, but essentially, what we're trying to do is explain how we came to the preservation of the Joyce Motors facade. I'm working with the HRI Policy for Essential. You know, it states that it's land use policies that need to be balanced with future growth. The county will be strategic, balancing historic preservation with other valuable county initiatives, such as affordable housing, sustainability, housing near metro stops. So what we did is we worked with the Arlington County Historic Staff and a historical consultant to determine what the character-defining features were for the building, and then relocate and preserve those features and place them onto the corner. Those character-defining features, which I have photos of that I can't, you can't see, are the large plate glass windows, the garage, the overhead garage doors, bumper guard, bollards, rounded corners, porcelain-enamelled panel and racing stripes, green racing stripes that you all know and see. And then in the north and west facade is really, if you go out there and look, and I went out and took pictures, it's just simply old cinder block with a parking lot out front. And so, once again, I have images of kind of, it's basically those two facades that make a lot of sense to preserve the south and east sides, and pulling it right to the corner and making it new and pulling it right to the corner of the Joyce, you know, preserving those as best that we can integrating it into the new Joyce Apartments, which we think will be the name. We're bringing that racing stripe, the green photos of, the green coloring and photos of old gas stations into the interiors of the building, the whole idea being that the whole building is an homage to this historical facade. And then if you actually, underneath all this, we are engaged in a land swap. We have a very funky land parcel that can't be developed. So we're swapping that with an adjacent parcel owner. That's the hotel developer. Also have images for this. The hotel's a very triangular site. You need very specific connection points from the garage to access the hotel garage. And when you, if you were to leave it in place, that our garage gets shrunk a lot, and that the drive aisles become very steep as you have to go down very steep in a very small area, and those garage connection points don't really work, which really throws the whole feasibility of the land swap and the whole triangular development up in the air. So just to reiterate, saving everything that we can, everything that has, you know, defines it, gives it that character-defining look of the historical building, refurbishing it as best we can, integrating it into the new building, the new development as best that we can to preserve it for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Orr, please feel free to email your slides to me, and I will make sure that the Planning Commission gets copies of them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Orr.
Our next speaker is Dave Shuts, followed by Brooke Alexander. Mr. Dave Shuts. Okay, we'll have Brooke Alexander.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Trying to turn my camera on, but it's not going, so I'll just talk. I'm from Ashton Heights. We haven't had a long time to look at the new materials that staff has posted, but do have some comments. And I'm going to speak today about the 10th Street Park. And I do wish to thank the Planning Commission for its support in the last meeting. I am providing further reasons to continue to support the park. The update to the Clarendon Sector Plan was not changing the vision statement for Clarendon, as I understand it. And so, I wanted to reiterate what that vision statement is for Clarendon. And it is stated on page seven of your 2022 Sector Plan at the top of the page. I'll read it. "The following vision statement was written by the task force and serves as the guiding statement for the sector's sector plan's goals, concept plans, adopted policies, blah, blah, blah." "The statement paints a picture of and defines Clarendon's urban village as a place where walking is the travel mode of choice. Diversity is nurtured, public spaces are beautiful, and it will be one of the," I'm jumping to the end there, "the best places for living, working, playing, and visiting." So, the thing I wanted to focus on there is it's envisioned to be a walking place and an urban village where you can have your recreation within walking distance. Now, the Planning Commission spent some time at the last meeting honoring, and I can't see my clock, so, honoring other commissions' work. And the last meeting, you talked about the historic preservation. I would make the same case for the Public Spaces Master Plan, which is adopted by the board in 2019, in which the, let's see, can you, sorry, can you go to the other slide? So this is from the Public Spaces Master Plan. And the second overall priority for the whole county for the Public Spaces Master Plan is to secure the public spaces mentioned by sector, including the Clarendon Sector Plan. So what that means is that public space on 10th Street identified in the 2006 Sector Plan is the second priority for the Public Spaces Master Plan. And if you go then to the next slide? Thank you. The level of service-
Just to make sure you know, you've got about 30 seconds left.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to point out that this is also from the Public Spaces Master Plan, and it's the matrix by which one would determine if there was sufficient recreation. And you can see that in the more dense areas, the travel time is half what it is in the rest of the county. And since we're talking about a walking urban village, we're looking at walking time. So all of those-
Ms. Alexander, your, your time has expired. Please conclude your comments.
Thank you very much.
That, that was an elegant conclusion. Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Let me get back to my screen. Thank you. Our five-minute speakers, our next speaker is Dick Woodruff with HALRB.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Good. My name's Dick Woodruff. I'm chairman of the HALRB. The HALRB strongly supports the motion passed by the Planning Commission urging the staff to incorporate recommendations in the 2022 Clarendon Sector Plan for full frontage preservation and situ for Joyce Motors, a building ranked essential in the county's historic resources inventory. This building is one of, is really the final and lone surviving example of the porcelain enameled box-like service stations that once were all over the country, were quite common in Arlington, but now is the very last one. It was built in 1949 as Texas Service Station Number 131. It's now known as Joyce Motors. The Joyce Building is one of only 10 commercial properties to receive the essential designation in Arlington County's historic resources inventory. And so you might ask, you know, what exactly does that mean? Point four of the Phase 1 HRI goals and policy objectives that were adopted by the county board on October 18th, 2011 states in part, "To promote the preservation of essential historic buildings in the HRI, the county will strive to protect all essential properties and will use all available tools to assure their continued stewardship and preservation. The county will actively collaborate with owners of essential properties to preserve the building's historical and material integrity to the maximum extent possible. The county will actively promote TDRs in exchange for building preservation. The county will appropriately weigh the impact of essential properties when awarding bonus density development projects, et cetera, et cetera." The list goes on about the work that the county should do. Now, I listened to Mr. Orr's presentation about how this new proposed building will pay homage to the old building, the old Joyce Motors building, by taking some of the panels and putting them in the corner of the new building. But the fact is demolition of this building and sod reconstruction in a different place is not historic preservation. It's not what the county board intended when it made this building an essential building. That wasn't allowed in Clarendon with much of the buildings that have been protected. And so I don't know why that's being allowed now. You know, my sense is we can build a new building. We can do that. And it can be done with the Joyce Motors building being saved. And at the same time, the public can get 2,000 square feet of public space at the corner of that property. Joyce Motors sits approximately 40 feet from Irving Street and 50, 50 feet from 10th Street. It's not a large space, but it could be a public space that breaks up the solid wall of buildings that will extend from Wilson Boulevard around the corner up 10th Street. The proposed building could still be built, as could the garage with some design, redesign, sorry. That open space with the Joyce Motors front behind it and a new building step back over it would be a much better complement to the proposed park across the street than a 75-foot building on the corner transitioning quickly to a 90-foot tall, 95-foot tall building. If you protect the Joyce building, at least the frontage of it, I'm not talking about the whole building, but the frontage of it in situ, the whole new building could be set back and preserve that corner in the same way that we've done in many places in Clarendon, including corner of Highland and Wilson, where there's now a sidewalk café that's being constructed. The Build 2 lines on both sides of Washington Boulevard have been interrupted where it intersects with 10th Street and Fillmore. At Clarendon Boulevard in Edgewood, across from the marketplace, we have a public space where the building doesn't go to the, the Build 2 line. Same with 3100 Clarendon. All of these spaces are what makes Clarendon a more livable and sociable and less claustrophobic and a more friendly place. This is the kind of open space that Clarendon needs and what makes Clarendon the special place that it is. So I just don't think there's been sufficient attention paid to the fact that the county board called for the Joyce Motors building to be protected. And I don't think the county has used all the tools available, quote unquote, that it, that it could be done, that it could use. It hasn't been done. And that work needs to be done. So what I ask is that, what, what is preventing the county from using those tools that allow an old building to be saved when a new one is built?
I know you're coming to a conclusion, but I also have to ask you-
That was my final line. So thank you for the opportunity.
I came in late.
And again-
Thank you very much, Mr. Woodruff. I'm sorry to have cut you off.
Okay, our next speaker and our last is John Jack Spilsbury.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As you know, I'm representing the Ashton Heights Civic Association as Chair of its Development Committee. I also served, as you know, as the AHCA representative during the 14-month long-range planning process. First, our association would like to express our appreciation to the Planning Commissioners who led and participated in that effort. And we commend all of you for your commitment, expertise, and creativity, as well as your attentiveness to both planning and design best practices, as well as community input and concerns. We are one of five civic associations officially represented in the LRPC. We've been, we, the five associations have been working together. Together, our five associations represent citizens both living within Clarendon and all the adjoining neighborhoods with a combined population over 35,000 residents. In the course of meetings and in letters to the Commission and the Board, our five associations have asked that the county prioritize realizing a significant contiguous public park space on the county-owned site. The Commission on Forestry and Natural Resources and also the Commission on Parks and Recreation, both also wrote to the Board to support retaining this park space and keeping the levels of service standards in the PSM, in the Park Public Services Master Plan. We've not yet gotten to the Parks Commission. I guess that will happen three days before the meeting. But no one has said, is disputed that this 10th Street property is the site in Clarendon suitable for active recreation use, whether it be a basketball court, a children's play area, or whatever. "We realize many things have changed since 2006, including plans for Verizon Building and the Firehouse. Clarendon is continuing to grow. The updated plan is now projecting a total build-out in Clarendon of 10 million gross square feet of residential office and retail density, page 19. This is a 40% increase over the density at the time of the 2006 plan." "The LRPC did great work to develop three options for the site, all of which preserved varying degree of open space that would offer active recreational opportunities. The county advised that Fire Station Number 4 might need to be rebuilt on the site. So one of three options proposes a 17,000-square-foot park on the site with the potential to co-locate a significant amount of recreational space on top of the fire department." I also attended the March 19th County Board Meeting, so I'm well aware that the Board asked the staff to add a fourth option that would involve co-locating the affordable housing. Nonetheless, I was very surprised over the weekend when the county staff posted a new version, a revised version of the 2022 Clarendon Plan Update that has been rewritten to prioritize this, this other alternative scenario, which is now presented as Option 1. And of course, along with the amendments that would rezone the county-owned site as residential. A new memo to the Board dated April 1st appears to favor this option and posits that there's a ring of parks in other neighborhoods at approximately a half-mile distance, suggesting this should be sufficient. I attest that none of these active park spaces are within a 10-minute walk for myself, let alone for kids, of these properties or the Clarendon Metro. It's no surprise to those living nearby that the PSMP's level of service maps park facilities, identify 181, figure 185 access hotspots, identify Clarendon Courthouse in Boston as among, actually, the two largest Arlington hotspots, areas, quote, "of most need limited access." Now, I also attended the Housing Commission meeting. I'm sympathetic with their concerns. The 2020 update needs to address development plans, and especially in the many new developments that are planned. In fact, there are substantial affordable housing opportunities close to the metro. First, in the four major plans for residential development practically adjacent to the park, I mean, the 10th Street site and Washington Circle. And across the street from the site, entire segments of 10th Street are still to be redeveloped and will likely also be proposed for residential development. We are very sorry, however, to see active park space at the county site pitted against options for public housing and to be told that both are not possible. This might have been avoided with a more thorough discussion of public housing earlier in the process. The county memo also states that while none of the 2022 scenarios would result in a full 50,000 square feet previously envisaged for the county and Verizon sites, I'm quoting, "all the scenarios would provide more permanently available public space within the study area for comparable residential population total development." The chart makes clear that neither of those are true. The, this new option number one does not provide more space in total. And if you include the convertible space, it provides much less. It only provides-
Mr. Spilsbury.
Okay.
Your time has expired.
Yeah, and finally, just to say that the, the numbers are wrong also with regard to the development capacity. If you look at the numbers in that chart, there's significantly more development being proposed.
Mr. Spilsbury, your time has expired.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
That is our last speaker.
Madam Clerk, that's, okay, that answers that question. Commissioner, will you tell me? I'm, I'm going to go to you and, and since I imposed the five-minute timeline on, on the HRLB, I'm going to ask you to be consistent with that timeline as well.
I will be happy to do so. This was before the Transportation Commission at our last meeting. It was voted to recommend this, subject to one amending motion. And that actually was referred to by Mr. Wallace's presentation. And that was to put, put, keep in the plan a public right-of-way between Fairfax Tribe and Wilson Boulevard, between North Side Social and the garage next to that. We felt that this was such a long stretch of unbroken block along Wilson there, between Washington Boulevard and 10th Street, that it really, it called for having a crossing there. There will be a want for crossing, given that another street will be put in a block on the south side of Wilson Boulevard. People are going to want to be crossing there. So we did strongly recommend and in fact did a motion, which passed unanimously, to restore or to keep that potential right-of-way in play. We all recognize that it's unlikely that in the near or even far future that that, that this will change in that both structures are now preserved. But if any opportunity does come up, we did want it to be in the plan so that it could be acted on. And that is why we've asked, we recommended that it be put in. I note that when the time comes, I will be making a similar motion on behalf of the Planning Commission. That's the Transportation Commission report.
Thank you. Commissioner, will you tell me? Madam Clerk, this is all of our speakers and commissioners. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The matter is now with the Commission, and I'm going to go first to Commissioner Schroll for the LRPC report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier today, I circulated an updated discussion topics list to members of the Commission. We'd just like to kind of highlight a few of those now. In the interest of time, I will not repeat what Mr. Wallace walked through and what is laid out in the, in the staff report, which I think does a great job outlining our process and the changes that have been made since the RTA. So, I mean, I think there's, given the discussion we had at our March meeting on the RTA, I think there's probably two key items for us to be discussing this evening, both given our discussion, but also the motions that we passed in March. So the first is the fire station option. So as Mr. Wallace noted, based on county board, board feedback, there's this fourth option, which would co-locate affordable housing and the fire station. This is Option 2.17, as shown in the staff report. This was considered by LRPC and dismissed by LRPC as an option that should not be considered because it did not allow for any open space on site. It also, based on our discussion last month, is somewhat, is inconsistent with, I think, where a number of my colleagues are, I think, on that issue. So I think this is certainly ripe for some further discussion this evening. And I anticipate that my colleagues will likely have some motions on that. And then the second is historic preservation. We heard from several public speakers about the need for NC2 preservation for the Joyce Motors site. It's not what the staff is, is recommending. And we, you know, clearly had a discussion at our March meeting on this matter, passed a motion in that regard to have NC2 preservation for, for that building. And so I think it is, has certainly warranted some further discussion on that as well. There might be some other matters, Mr. Chairman, but I think those are the ones I think jump out to me. I know my colleague, Mr. Lynn Tellme, mentioned he has a motion he's going to offer. For my own purposes, I intend to move the county manager's recommendations, but would certainly welcome other motions from my colleagues. And we can entertain that when we get there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. So we have two broad topics in, in the, the fire station and in historic preservation. Are there any other topics that commissioners would like to see added to the list? Commissioner Patel.
Commissioner, I, I don't, I don't anticipate adding any additional topics, but I did want to just foretell to my fellow commissioners that I do plan on raising the motion that Commissioner Morton had raised with regards to the historic preservation issues that were, that we discussed last month.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. I, I believe that you are not, I know for certain that you are not the only person who is planning on doing that. And so I expect that that will come up when we get to motions. Thank you. I think that we will start with the fire station. I know a handful of people have a number of questions. I have some questions. But Commissioner Guren, I will start with you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Schroll, for leading the LRPC. I have some strong thoughts on this, and it won't be a surprise to my colleagues. On PC, our responsibilities include providing a form for the community to identify and share their preferences, and also balancing competing priorities: housing, transportation, open space, recreation, other needs. Other commissions, like housing, have a more narrow focus, and they can have more of an advocacy role. Other commissions like housing have a more narrow focus and they can have more of an advocacy role. And I say this as someone who was a housing coordinator in the San Francisco area, advocating for arranging financing and legal documents, engaging the community to provide housing for low income families, farm workers, people with AIDS. I'm very sympathetic to this issue. But at the same time, we are not providing enough open space commensurate with our plan development. We're adding thousands of households to Arlington without as much open space. And as a county, we adopted a biophilia initiative premised on the definition of biophilia. We know that people thrive with regular access to nature. If we don't provide it to some people, are we somehow leaving them bereft? Private developers will always come in and propose something residential or commercial. When we see them creating and maintaining things like parks and schools, as we recently saw with the Amazon developments and National Landing, that's part of the community benefits package. They're not going to come in and offer to do that. So it's incumbent upon us, PC, to carefully consider how we'll ensure that these sort of uses, these public uses are not precluded by any of the land use decisions we're asked to act upon. In particular, we need to ensure that public land, land that's envisioned or otherwise designated for public purposes, is used for those uses. And I want to remind my colleagues, this came up when we did Four Mile Run a few years ago. We looked at a review of jurisdictions that champion smart growth. And this was a scholarly article. It found that many of them made two errors. They got rid of their industrial land uses and you can't get those back and they didn't plan for provide enough open space. So in our role as PC, we've heard from the community and they clearly want to park with the fire station. We also know, unlike the other commissions, that many, many other proposals are coming in with housing. I suggest that we support co-location, but with a fire station and a park, public uses. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Guren. I'm going to go to Commissioner Tellme. I want to keep us focused on questions before we go into comments. And so Commissioner, will you tell me, with that proviso, you have the floor.
And I will hold off because I will be making-
So Commissioner Hughes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Tellme.
I kind of want staff to tell us why this evening we saw a presentation from our good staff on their parks analysis. And I'm struck, we had, I think, two public comment speakers and I myself flashed back and and I pulled up in my own head, I'm on page 195 of our adopted Public Spaces Master Plan with the Access Gap Hotspot Map. So I'm asking, my question for staff is why do they choose this novel presentation for access hotspot gaps when we already have an established metric?
Hi. I know we have staff from DPR, Mr. Gonzalez on the line that may speak to that point. And if I need to share any visuals, I'm happy to do so.
Could you pull up for a moment the visual you showed on your presentation earlier, the half mile parks?
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that. Okay, here we go. Can you see the screen now?
I can.
Okay, good.
Mr. Series and Walter Gonzalez, Department of Parks and Recreation, but the Park Department Division.
Good to hear you again.
Do you mind repeating your question again, Commissioner Hughes?
I'm really curious. So we spent, and don't get me wrong, I'm not the biggest fan of the access hot map. You know, it was developed in the parks master plan. As I mentioned, there were many facilities I felt that should have been included that weren't. But we chose a method of visualizing the lack of public spaces we have in the county using the Public Space Master Plan guidance that was adopted two years ago. And page 195 lists out the access hotspots consolidated. So why are we choosing to present this map as a particular way of showing the available facilities?
We chose this because this, it's easier to read and someone, for the public to see what amenities are provided at these parks. As you can see, there is a wide array of different recreational amenities, both active and casual uses within the study area.
But the access map, hotspot map that we have on page 195 of the Public Spaces Master Plan outlines the things that are not present.
Yes, so as-
Not all the things, just the things we agreed to.
Yes, no, as earlier on in the presentation, I'm not sure if you remember, but in the first online engagement, we had this map and also the LOS level of service maps highlighting all the different other service amenities and the areas in those maps on there in that presentation as well. So this information was previously shared early on.
You're talking about the earlier on in the LRPC process?
Yep, during the LRPC process, the first online engagement, that information was shared with LOS maps and also the access hotspot map as well.
Yeah, okay. Good, good. I'm glad to know that. I just think we do ourselves a little bit disservice when we spend so much time developing metrics and measures. Even when we don't agree with them, that would be yours truly on a few of the issues of items not included on the access hotspot gap. And then we don't use them as our metric of gauging whether or not we're appropriately doing it. So Commissioner, I'll avoid making comments further since you wanted to be questions, but I think I understand now where staff's at on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Any other commissioners with questions, informational or otherwise, before we go to comments on this matter? I'll take the opportunity while anyone else decides to raise their hand. A question I have is the, I guess it pertains to figure 2.17, which is the standalone fire station option. And actually also figure 2.16, both show a front apron, one shows a rear apron. I want to get a better understanding of why, two things. One, why are we envisioning these at the, why are we still envisioning these at the sector plan level when it seems to me like it very well might be the case that the placement of the apron itself is more of a site plan discussion? And related, given the proximity to metro, given the density of the area, why the sector plan envisions these apron facilities when the, when, when we already have another, a model for an urban fire station in Arlington in Roslyn that, as best as I can tell from Google and Apple Maps, does not have an apron. And when other analogues in Alexandria and in the district also are not building aprons in fire stations that are so proximate to metro and where that square footage is so vitally necessary for other uses. So those are the two questions and I'm looking forward to hearing.
I'll try to address those as best as I can. I know we're also joined by the fire chief here who may be able to speak to these, but so for figure 2.6, so this is the co-location option, which is consistent with 2.17. So you see the front apron, which is set back from the street. And the reason for the front apron is for, to do ladder checks on some of the apparatus. This is the central fire station, has the most staff within the RV corridor. So it's essential that the fire station and department have an open to the sky front apron that's shown in those two exhibits there. In figure 2.6 with co-location, the rear apron could be potentially covered with housing. So the fire department could, as you can see in this diagram, they could access the rear apron from Hudson Street pull through, but then this could be completely covered with housing above, as you see in the model image on the right. But the front apron, I think, is essential for some of the maintenance checks of some of the apparatus for this station in particular. But the rear apron for a co-location option could be covered again with housing, whereas in the standalone, the standalone scenario in 2.17, it would be exposed to the sky. So-
Oh, I see we've got Mr. Pavlets here. I want to press on a specific aspect of my question, which is please distinguish this for me from the Roslyn Fire Station and from the fire stations in, that are being built in Alexandria and the district that do not have front aprons. And I presume still do ladder checks. So I, you know, given that this is a land use planning document, I really want to hear an explanation about why a front apron is a necessity in light of other land use decisions that have been made recently here and in our sister and our neighbor jurisdictions. So Mr. Pavlets and Mr. Wallace, if I cut you off, I, you know, please, I have my apologies, but Mr. Pavlets, I think it was about to go to you, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Mr. Wallace absolutely correctly explained the orientation and the designs for 2.16 and 2.17 for Station 4 in Clarendon. I cannot speak to designs in the district. I have a little knowledge in Alexandria, but I think your question is centered on Station 10 in Roslyn on Wilson Boulevard. Based on the preliminary designs, there is a back ramp that approaches and it is open space. So that's essentially at the rear of the station where we can do apparatus checks or ladder extensions. That's for our preventive maintenance and daily readiness. So there is space. It just happens to be on the rear approach for the pull-through bays behind the station.
That's, that's here or at Station 10?
That's at Station 10, the new station.
And the square footage at Station 10 is about the size as the square footage of either of the rear and front aprons here?
I'm going to say yes, but there's three bays at Station 10 and there's four plenty here. So it would be a little larger, but it's essentially, it's the pullout distance, which is key. So in figure 2.16 and 2.17 on the front apron, there was enough space to conduct those checks. We have the similar space and orientation at the rear of Station 10 in Roslyn.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pavlets. It's very helpful. Commissioner Hughes.
I'm trying to, Mr. Pavlets, and I do apologize. I'm just trying to understand and I'm currently understanding and I don't have the chance to pull up the things. But I hope before we go to the county board, and make no mistake, I think Commissioner Weir's comments are incredibly important. The square footage in our, in our community is incredibly valuable. And I don't, I'm, I'm looking at the street view. I'm looking behind the building. I can't find this area. And so I'm really curious and really important for us to know. And it's incredibly important, Mr. Pavlet, for us as part of the community and part of the plan. Number one, we all want our fire protection equipment to work all the time, every time. I mean, that's, you know, that's, we love that about you guys. But we also have to be really cognizant that literally every square footage you'll see in this conversation this evening, Mr. Pavlet, in our community, especially in our urban corridors, is valuable. And when I mean valuable, I mean valuable to the square foot of $500, at least a square foot, when you think about it. And so it's incredibly important for us to make sure we limit the amount of non-productive usable space. And if it's necessary, it's there. But I really do want to thank Commissioner Weir for these comments and continue to press on staff and all to make sure. We have to make sure we are building in the urban form. How does Manhattan do it? How does San Francisco do it? How do we do it in those areas? Don't even have the luxury of being able to drive 10 minutes or two, a mile or a half a mile to a very suburban fire station and performing it there. So I'm very curious from, from Mr. Wallace and others to just make sure that we really do have this right and that it is a true necessity because we are, as Commissioner Weir said, putting it inside of a planning document for land use. And, 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 you know, we don't even have to get into the other conversations with, you know, laying widths and everything, but it's very important we understand exactly what's driving this because it's really not obvious to me either, Commissioner Weir.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Pavlets, if you were going to respond, please.
Yeah.
Both very good points. Let me assure you, Station 10 in Roslyn, based on, the design was based on the approach angles and engineering from our vehicles. And we have a serpentine into that station trying to maximize all the building space that's available. The same process was done in these plans. And I believe the next slide after this, you can see the turn angle on the, on the approach for 2.16, where it's extremely tight coming in off Hudson Street. And that's engineered to our vehicle specifications. And in this particular instance, the largest thing we have in our fleet, our ladder tower truck is stationed at Station 4, which responds east and west to the corridor. That's one of our most important pieces. So your, your concerns are definitely considered, are definitely considered in all of the design and the engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlet. And just to make sure, we all for the record, the big, you're saying the big, the bit, the one my, my son loves the most, the one with the guys driving in the back and the front, is stationed at this firehouse? Is that what I understood?
We do not have a ladder taller, but it's slightly shorter than that version. It's a ladder tower, which is the largest thing in our fleet, which has the greatest turn angle of all types of fire apparatus.
Okay.
I think I had the plain mobile version of that when I was a kid too. Mr. Wallace, I see your hand is up. I want to, Commissioner, I want to go, if, I want to give Commissioner Steinberger the opportunity to ask a question. And Commissioner Steinberger, if you have a comment, I'm going to, I want to go back to Mr. Commissioner Tellme, since he had already sort of put his hand up.
It is a question.
Great.
Which I've just made my camera worse. I apologize. With regards to the staff recommendation for the preservation of the Joyce Motor Site kind of remaining to relocate the facade to the corner as previously, whereas originally recommended by staff and, you know, and obviously the planning commission had a, you know, we passed a motion last month at the advertising point where we sought to have it preserved in situ. To what extent or is it? I'm still not convinced that there's been enough sort of creative exploration of how that site could be re-envisioned so as to, you know, creatively preserve the and effectively preserve that site in its present location. And I think we heard some, you know, feedback from the HLRB this evening, which, you know, started to get at some more creative solutions potentially. I'm just curious if county staff could further expand on why they don't believe that we could actually get to that point and why additional sort of creative thinking would not yield a different result here and to the point where county is standing by the original, county staff is standing by the original recommendation. I just wanted a little more exposition on that. Thank you.
Sure, I can take a stab at that. I guess first and foremost, I mean, we, we don't have control of that. Property is privately owned by the applicant that spoke earlier this evening, who has an application that's been filed and accepted for over a year and a half now to redevelop that parcel along with other parcels adjacent, including the Bingham Center and the Silver Diner Sites. And as the applicant noted earlier, there's a lot of parcel assemblage that's been, has occurred to achieve redevelopment of this triangular portion of the block from Clarendon Circle down to 10th Street. And, you know, preservation in place is not recommended by staff. Staff is recommending the relocation and preservation of the facade to be relocated to the corner to meet the build two lines and to celebrate the history of the project. Staff has included in the sector plan draft update, the text references to the HRI and the Historic Preservation Master Plan, including additional creative tools that could be used for preservation. Going forward, our staff has been, has worked with the applicant through the application process to, to look at ways of preservation here. As noted earlier about the applicant, there are some contamination issues and the south and east facades are the most significant in terms of preservation. And, you know, I, I think the, some of the ideas, I think that were suggested earlier by the HLRB rep are certainly welcomed and creative ideas. However, I don't think as county staff, we have any control to, to do any kind of public open space there in front with any redevelopment. That would have to be through private redevelopment activity. And from what I understand, the applicant has expressed concerns about preservation in place with some of the- Concerns about preservation in place um with some of the exhibits that may be shared. Um, via email with the commissioners later that unfortunately couldn't be shared earlier. Um, I do have additional exhibits. To kind of further illustrate those points. Um, I'm happy to share, but um. Currently staff is, is uh recommending the preservation and relocation to the corner. I will also note that at the County Board. Meeting, this i- item was discussed um very briefly. I know Commissioner Gearing provided a, a report out from. The Planning Commission's previous meeting at the RTA. Um, however, um, in the County Board's motion to authorize advertisement. Um, they did not authorize advert- advertisement of preservation in situ of the Joyce Motors Project. Um, their motion was specific to the county-owned site within the fire station. Um, to include the fourth scenario for co-locations. So I just want to make that clarification. That if the Planning Commission would like to continue to pursue preservation institute, that um they can continue to do so, but it may require. The County Board to, to re-advertise uh the plan.
Uh, thank you. I, I do appreciate that as a very helpful clarification.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hughes and, and um uh, given how quickly your hand went up in response to Mr. Wallace's comments, I, I. Would ask that we um try to put a pin in historical preservation uh to the extent that it becomes a historical preservation question.
I, it is. Uh, so Mr. Wallace.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to hold off on it until we get to historical preservation.
I apologize. I had the order confused and I apologize for uh taking us off topic. Sorry.
We'll get back to it. Um, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Steinberger, Mr. Wallace and Commissioner Hughes. Um, uh, other um. Uh, Commissioner, will you tell me? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to you then. You had your hand up earlier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. My comments on this are. Uh, Commissioner Hughes is absolutely right. This property is astonishingly valuable. Uh, we really have a responsibility to maximize its usage. For this corridor. Um, certainly the fire station is a prime usage, and I'm assuming that it is going to stay here. That even though the sector plan, when it was first created years ago. Contemplated the fire station moving and we have that as one of the options. It's a practical matter. I just don't see that happening. Um, so we have to deal with what we have. Right now, the fire station is there, which has a, a little. Three, four-story office building on top of it that is not related, I believe, to the actual functioning of the fire station as a fire station. It was used as back office. Um, probably for the fire department, but that shows that there can be more on this site. The park. When this sector plan was originally created, the assumption was the Verizon building was going to go away. Well, that was another false assumption, that mistaken assumption. Um, it's not going to go anywhere, um, which then cuts back on the ability to create the size park that everyone anticipated. That simply isn't going to happen. Nonetheless, the, I think the neighborhoods are correct to want to have park space here. Um, again, we're getting back to how can we maximize the use of this space? We've seen in other jurisdictions and including ours, uh, where we have, we do have housing on top of fire stations. I understand the constraints of this site that will need a lot more creativity. Um, I think we need to have a larger study going forward. That would look to what sort of recreational facilities could be here, what sort of park or open space could still be put into this. Um, if we have residential, do we, could we be really radical and just have no parking provided for the tenants whatsoever? I'm confident we'd be able to fill that building with people who don't need or want to have cars, given the market that we're in right now. Um, I think this ca- is something that can be done. It's being done in other jurisdictions right now. It does require some work. It does require some creativity. Um, but I think it can be done and it should be, we should be looking. I, I agree with Commissioner Garen. Um, the open space. Some sort of open space here is important. Um, I'm not convinced by the half-mile radius that was shown here, that. Facilities that are within the half-mile really do the trick. I think Commissioner Hughes is right, that we have a lot of missing things here. Um, but even if some of those aren't fulfilled by this site, just the, the open space or simply a playground could be useful. Um, given the additional people that are, will be moving in within this redone area of, of, of Clarendon Sector Plan. We're planning to put more residence, more residences. On a number of these blocks. Um, having a bit more open space will be useful uh on a per capita basis, what we're doing. So anyway, that's my soapbox here. Um, I do want us to have the flexibility to put multiple things on this site in addition to the very much needed and appropriate fire station. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Patel.
So I um want to align myself with the comments of um Commissioners Hughes, Garen and Lynn Tell Me. I think that um what this scenario here. I, I feel like we are often, we're placed in this very kind of false narrative that we're prioritizing one thing over the other. When there are, when there could be opportunities for further study and more creativity. We do have, we are in a space right now where. Our uses need to be, I mean, we're, we're constrained. We can't get any more space and we need to be able to find. Um, uses that are um available to all residents. I mean, you know, immediate residents are going to enjoy this space, but it's space for the county at large. And so when we think about public space and the public use of space, um, that is a priority as, as, as Commissioner Garen said. Um, at our last hearing, that um we can't claw that back once we get rid of public space. And how we define public space and how we define public use of that space, it's important as well. We, we can't be put in this false narrative of having to choose between affordable housing and public space. Both are important to this commission. And this commission, I think, has really kind of radically reinforced that notion several times. Um, throughout at least my tenure, where we've talked about how important it is to, to commit to affordable housing, to make sure that we're taking every step possible. We've gone down the rabbit hole on financing questions to try to figure out how to optimize projects better to ensure that there's more affordable housing. That's made available and that is online for our community. So, you know, I, I, I don't disagree with the comments of Commissioner Lynn Tell Me. I think that there's more creativity. There's more op- options and opportunities for us to come up with, more for us to look at in terms of. Um, i- identifying ways to co-locate these resources that we need and the uses that we're expecting from it. Thank you.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna jump in in front of you. Thank you, Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Hughes, I'm gonna jump in in front of you. Um, with a question, uh, but I, Commissioner Schroll, if you have a question instead of a comment, I'm gonna give you um a priority. Let me know.
Um, it's more a comment, Mr. Chairman, so I can wait.
Thank you. So um, just, you know, as you all know, I, I try to prioritize um. Questions uh over, over comments and I apologize in advance to the extent that anyone wonders whether my questions are leading. I hope that they're not. Uh. One of the, Mr. Wallace, one of the recommendations last month from Planning Commission, it wasn't in the form of a mo- it, it. Uh, it wasn't completely in the form of a motion, but it did come up was um, uh. Envisioning co-location of public amenity spaces and facilities. Um, especially of the kinds that in a open space are often on the green space, but, but could be moved to somewhere else, freeing up the green. Space for being green. That, that was noted in the staff report. Uh, um, uh, but, but I am curious to know whether. I, I, I'm, I'm curious as to, I, I didn't see any, any additional like art or, or text to that effect. Um, and uh, I'm, I'm just curious to know whether or not. It was. If there was any decision to not go down that road, um, or, or, or if there wasn't, just what kind of things might be feasible. Um, uh, because what, what we have in those four figures is um co-located housing, not co-located uh somewhere else. Uh, but we don't see anything that sort of visualizes what um, what it would look like to have a, a fire station with some kind of co-location of public. Um, amenity facilities either on top or, or, you know, as part of it. Um, so a, a, any comment on that or, or, or response or. Um, it's actually on page eleven. If you had just read it, you idiot, uh, would be appreciated.
Yeah. Yeah. So in figure two point one seven with the standalone fire station, um, staff has.
It's on page nine if I just read it. Uh, sorry. Uh, uh, Tomi, I'm sorry to cut you off.
It's okay. Um, so figure two point one seven, the scenario with this standalone fire station. Um, and the ten thousand square foot at Gray Park, staff has identified um potential co-location of rooftop. Public spaces. We heard this loud and clear from the commissions and the community. And so in the sector plan text. Um, we have indicated this is a potential um opportunity to explore. However, we have also identified there are. Considerations um with public spaces above fire stations in terms of access, security. Elevators, stairs. And so it, you know, there are some considerations that we've outlined in the sector plan text. Um, but it is something that. We are open to exploring both from, speaking from our parks and recreation staff and our fire department. So it, it is included in the sector plan update. Um, as a potential um opportunity.
And uh, I, I'm gonna put a question out there. I want to move along to the people who I'm cutting off, uh, but I'm, I'm gonna come back to this in a bit. Just, um, I just, I would, I would like you to give us a reminder about. Where, what kinds of thinking in terms of co-location or what, what co-location looks like is ripe for. A sector plan versus what kinds of details are ripe for a site plan and, and like, what do we need to figure out here? And, and what's the line between what should be figured out here and what should be figured out at, at, at site plan? But again, I want to give you a second to noodle on that one while I go to um, um, Commissioner Patel. Who might be muted, Commissioner Patel? Uh.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to address that.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Let's do that.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I guess going back to some of the previous conversation with regard to the front apron. Co-location amenities. This is not something that we tend to get into detail with sector plans. These are, um, as mentioned several times, these are again, multiple scenarios that could. Um, uh, be achieved on the county-owned site with either a fire station replaced onsite or relocated offsite. With multiple opportunities for public open spaces. Um, I think the details of aprons. And some of the amenities, things of that nature are to be part of a future uh site plan process. Um, or park master planning process, uh, that's typically led through DPR. Um, so again, staff feels that providing these. Uh, alternatives that you see here provides flexibility for both options of either an onsite or offsite. Uh, fire station uh with opportunities for public open space. So, um, but again, I think uh staff is not um recommending any specific amenities. Um, as, as part of the sector plan process. Again, that would be something that would be determined through a future. Uh, park master planning process that would also be, be, you know, involve the community.
Right. Thank you. Um. Commissioner Hughes, just because of what I already said, uh, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Schroll first and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. So, you know, our planning documents, you know, serve several purposes. Now they. They help us um provide for, you know, future development. They indicate our aspirations and goals. Um, but they also. Provide clarity, not only to the developers, to, you know, to county staff, but also to the community. And so. My concern with the revised approaches that we're seeing on the screen now, namely uh figure two point one six. Is we went from a scenario. You know, in the RTA where um the community at least knew, kind of regardless of what happened. There would be at least some open space here on the site. The open space dimensions would change, what they might get would change based on what was, what's happening. Whether the fire station is located onsite or offsite. But now we have a scenario if we include figure two point one six. Despite all its potential benefit of additional affordable housing, you go from. Some predictability to, there's now a little predictability. We could have. All the open space, maybe more than we were initially envisioning. Or we could end up with none. And so that to me is problematic. Um, and I think it also. Um, breaks down kind of where we landed due to the public process. Um. Where there was still an option for affordable housing on this site to. Um, a, a scenario that kind of breaks that, that public trust of the public feedback um that did help change this plan. Um, but this is an instance, I think, where, where that kind of fell down. I know staff is responding to a county board ask here. Um, this is not what staff came forward with. So I do want to acknowledge that you are responding to directives from the county board. And I understand that it's something you have to do. Um, that being said, I don't think this is something that should go forward. Um, in this, in this way. Um, and I don't think this is how we want to have planning documents that can be all things to all people. In the future. I don't think that's what we want our planning documents to do. They need to be more narrowly defined than that. Um, and they need to kind of clearly define where we want to go. And um, peo- people can kind of work within those confines. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll yield back.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hughes.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner.
I'm gonna go to Commissioner Hughes first and then Mr. Wallace, uh, if you need to respond, I'll just have you respond to both at the same time.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Weir. And, and wow, it's really hard to follow the Commissioner Schroll there. Uh, uh, I, I, if you don't mind, staff's just leaving it on this one comment because this is the, the priority slide. Um. Commissioner Schroll, I, I don't know if I could say that any better, but, but i- it was amazingly done. And, and it's correct. It, it's a thing I've learned in my seven years of doing this planning from, from absolutely no real experience, you know, obsessed with Cary, it taught me a few, few times into. You know, seven years of not sitting through these meetings. Um, and, and the clarity that's lost. And it's why I was initially so, so. Passionate in my, my comments and my motions on the RTA. It's also why I think everyone ignored the two other comments I made in the same document, which is. We could equally, the county board could have equally directed uh staff to prepare a zoning ordinance overlay and other uh methods and tools that ensures that every private developer came forward with a contribution to affordable housing. There are methods to actually do it. Uh, and what I mean by that is onsite, that's, there's methods. Um, but we didn't. We chose uh, uh, the methods. And again, uh, it's back to my point of, and I, and I, Commissioner Patel also saying, you know, it's not, we've been placed in this, this false paradigm of a dichotomous choice between. Uh, uh, housing and parks. And, and it's absolutely true. And what, what I cannot say, and I will continue to say, I don't know if I will be able to support the plan as written tonight. So Commissioner Schroll, I look forward, hopefully you have some great resolutions. I don't plan to make too many motions this evening. Um, is, although I, Christian Wallace and Commissioner Schroll, you did a great job with all your staff work on this. Um, it's nothing to say negative there, but. It is a fundamental principle for me. And it really does get down to, we have so much land in this community. That is dedicated to housing. Maybe not right, housing-wise with respect to R six, R five, R twenty, uh, uh, R A eighteen, uh, but zoned housing. Uh, we only have so much land that is PS three, a- and, and we only have so much land that can be whatever the county needs at what any given time it needs. And the wonderful thing about these approaches, and it's, it's visible in the old fire station, as Commissioner Latomi alluded to. That three stories above it that are offices that at one time probably supported it, but at this point are functionally don't. Think about that. At one time, instead of centralizing our offices or, or, or spreading them out, we, we put them on top of the fire station. Um, and, and so what it means is that all of these uses can and do uh exist in the time that they're needed in that. Last time when we had this RTA, I spoke clearly and plainly about the above grade. Uh, reason, the reason I use community garden on the roof was simple. Community garden is the one thing. Inside of our park space master plan where this area is in the circle. Uh, it's the thing lacking apparently. Uh, at least the ones we define. So I, I'll yield back, Commissioner Sch- uh, Weir, but I, I'm. I, I remind my fellow commissioners, every. I I remind my fellow commissioners, every single time you put a house on a piece of land the county owns. Somebody in the future is going to have to evict them. There are not very many buildings that stand forever, and that's just a fact. Um, and so Commissioner Weir, uh, I look forward to the motions this evening from my fellow commissioners on this. But I can't, I can't really support it at the moment as it's written. And I appreciate all the hard work that staff and especially Commissioner Stroll has put forward in this process and and hope to not diminish it by that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Yeah, thank you. Just, I want to clarify a couple of things on this slide in particular. I just want to note that the reason why the scenario on the far left is highlighted is not because it's the preferred scenario. It's just, I meant to highlight it as something that was added. Following the RTA, um, so I neglected to note that in my presentation, so apologies, but. By all means, all four of these scenarios are on the table for potential. Uh, land use scenarios for the county site, and again, assuming either. Replacement of the fire station onsite or relocation. So these are all on the table for discussion and with with the commission tonight and also. Uh, the county board. I also want to note. Um, that, um, and looking at the heights map, um, the one difference with Clarendon. Um, with regard to some of the other sector plans is that the heights and some of the other, the use mix and some of the other maps that were presented earlier. Are codified in the zoning ordinance and are are.
Mr. Wallace, did we lose you or or have I lost everyone?
I think I got cut off for a second.
What the last thing I heard you say was that, um, uh, with respect to the heights and and uh, the uses being prescribed in our zoning ordinance.
Okay, are you still seeing the the screen still?
We're seeing slide twelve.
Okay, good. Yeah, what I was saying was that. Um, the difference with Clarendon and some of the other sector plans is that the heights and some of the other regulations are codified and zoning ordinance. And are not modifiable by the county board. So by providing these two. Alternatives with the new inset alternative heights map, for example. Could it would not preclude either of the four options that you've seen tonight. From, you know, being achieved in the future. So again, I think, as noted several times. Um, we're providing flexibility in the plan through these land use scenarios and some of the maps. So that future determination can be needed, you know, again, thinking about details once a final. Architect and engineer is on board and there's, you know, further detail to be explored. You know, trying to resolve some of the challenges that we've identified this evening with co-location. That, again, we're just trying to provide flexibility in this plan that to achieve either of these options. Um, but there, it doesn't mean that there couldn't be a combination of one with the other.
Yeah.
So I just want to make that point. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. I, um, I'm gonna call on myself, which is something I try to not usually do. But I've done a couple of times tonight. I'm gonna do this one last time, I think. I, I think for the benefit of my colleagues, I think that there are. Two related but discrete issues that we are struggling with here. Uh, and I've spoken to a couple of you about this, and and I I think I'm gonna have a motion when we get to motions. There's, there's one issue. Which I think that there's still some disagreement, at least, uh, we've definitely heard some from the public, and. I'm, I'm not certain that the county board is of one mind on this, and I'm not certain that we are. About should co-located space be. Prioritized for housing or should co-located space be prioritized for. Open space and or the kinds of public amenities and facilities that would. Relieve the, the, that would allow for more green space where we have open space and. Um, I I'll admit to being somewhere between ambivalent and indifferent about which of the two it is. Where I am unequivocal and and not ambivalent or indifferent is on this, the related discrete issue. Of whether it is acceptable to have standalone, to have planning documents. That envision standalone uses uh, within two fifths of a mile from a metro station. And I, I am very uncomfortable with a sector plan that the. You know, a year, two years, five years down the road, an applicant could come along and say. We would like to do this standalone. Facility two fifths of a mile from Metro and. And it's in the sector plan. It's envisioned in the sector plan, and so we think it's an appropriate use. And then. At that point, it's almost certain that we're not gonna get. Or we're gonna get very limited co-located housing, and we're gonna get no or very limited co-co-located. Uh, uh, open space or public facilities. So I I think that. The motion that I'm gonna offer tries to allow us to weigh in. Discreetly and separately on the related issues of whether or not. We want. Non-co-located facilities to be in envisioned in the sector plan on the one hand, and on the second hand, on the other hand. If facilities are going to be co-located. Does the commission have a recommendation as to whether or not there is a particular use that's more appropriate for this area, given all of our planning documents? That's my piece on this. Uh, that and just to add. Uh, that I I hope that we could have a discussion uh, in the near future about. Um, something that I I heard Chief Pavlet say, uh, which is, which is, I'll, I'll be honest, is very concerning to me. Uh, and that's the idea that that, uh, the, that our planning documents are being. Built uh, to reflect. Maps that are engineered to vehicle specifications. I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with the idea that land use planning documents. That are being used to cite buildings and rights of way. Uh, and and a built environment with a lifespan measured in potentially a hundred years. Is is being uh, driven by. The needs of vehicles that are, um, that have twenty year lifespans and I, I would, there's, we're not, that's nothing that's gonna be resolved this evening, but for the benefit of my colleagues and. And anyone who might be listening, I I really hope that that's a discussion that we can have in. Uh, another evening, but in the near future. Uh, are there any other commissioners who want to be heard on fire on on issues related to the fire station? I believe that means then that we are ready to go to.
Yeah, I have one question now, and this is for Mr. Wallace. With these land use scenarios, what? What flexibility is it is there within these? Is it a rain? That would. Combine a couple, for example, uh, not that this sort of would work, because you either they're, either the fire station's here or it's not. I guess what I, my concern is, it seems like we're very constrained by it, and I think. Uh, Chair Weir has alluded to this too. How locked in are we with two point one six, for example, that if it's going to the fire stations to be collected? If there's gonna be a co-location, it has to be.
Commissioner, I tell me you are coming in and out.
Oh, okay, well, I'll try again. Um, I've nothing on it. With figure two point one six, that scenario. If, are we locked into that under the sector plan? Or does, does it have to be housing? Could there be something else co-located there that would still fit within the sector plan then? Or 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 is it, it's housing or nothing?
Yeah, I can address that. And I guess really going back to, and again, these are illustrative diagrams. For presentation purposes. Yes, they will ultimately be included in the draft plan update if if adopted. Um, however, I think going back to the maps, which again, as I stated, are. In the zoning ordinance, these are the, these are the maps that are gonna govern what. Gets developed. Um, and so as you can see in these two height. Map scenarios, you're not seeing a front apron, for example. Um, so staff is still recommending heights up to seventy five feet. Uh, and then tapering up to one hundred and ten. Along Tenth Street. So again, we want to be flexible. And, you know, again, as I mentioned before. Um, the, the county board cannot modify the heights, but within these envelopes and these height limits that are set here. As you see here on the screen, we can achieve either four of these. Scenarios and, um. Again, just trying not to get too much into the design, but as I mentioned earlier. It, as you said, Mr. Lynn, tell me, it could be a combination of. Multiple of these scenarios. The subject to future design, architecture and engineering. Um, but at this level of the site, um, sector plan level. Um, we're trying to keep it a little bit more high level with these, these flexible scenarios. So. I hope that.
I just want to try, you know, I'm gonna try one more, just try to really pin it down in my own mind on this. So I, my apologies. So even though two point one six says co-located with housing. There could be a proposal that would come up that would have a different public perp, public use than housing. That would co-locate this, and it would still be within. The county board's ability to allow that under this sector plan. We can't, I agree, we can't modify the height, go above the height, but we could say a different use. Is appropriate, and the county board could then okay that under this sector plan.
So I would then. Go back to the maps again, looking at the use mix map. So. Uh, as you can see here, the two options. As identified in the light pink for residential, commercial, hotel or mixed use. Uh, that could include co-location of public. Facilities, um, but that's not something that we've. You know, outlined or. Marked in the, in the plan update, but it's certainly something that could be considered in the future. If there were to be some type of public facility co-located. Above a fire station. Um, I I do want to also note, um, as stated in the staff report and previously that. Um, the PSMP does discourage against smaller indoor public spaces. Or community facilities. So I, I think, you know, again, it's something that's noted in the plan update and the text as something that could be potentially explored, as I noted earlier. With, uh, figure two point seven above a fire station, it could be the same for figure two point six, two point one six or two point one eight. Um, again, that would be something that would be discussed. In the future as part of a. When there's actually a development partner in a site plan application being reviewed. So I think those are just details again that we are not looking to. To nail down as part of this, this process, but the, the text does include, you know, uh, it does note. Exploration of some of those opportunities.
Okay, so there is flexibility in that.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was a long way of saying it. Sorry.
You, thank you, Commissioner Lantome. I, uh, apologize, I, I, one of my colleagues, I asked to hold off until we got back to. Commissioner Hughes, I think it was you until we got back to, um, historical preservation. Uh, and so, assuming that was you, Commissioner Hughes, I'm gonna give you the, the floor first on on preservation. Uh, otherwise, I'm gonna go to. Either Commissioner Lantome or Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Lantome, your hand is still raised. Commissioner Hughes.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Weir, and the question for Mr. Wallace on the historical preservation. Uh, you've mentioned, uh, I think multiple times, both this evening and in in our presentation last night. Or or last month, that, uh, the Joyce Motors site, uh, application has been received and accepted from staff. So I want to make sure. I, I, I want to make sure that my fellow colleagues kind of understand, and maybe you might be able to help us highlight for for them. What it would mean if we were to drastically change the expectations after an accepted site plan such as that one was done. And and how that could be perceived moving forward from other developers or within the, the rights landowners do or may have within the county. Does that question make sense, Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I may not be able to speak to some of the implications going forward, but I can speak to. Just to confirm again that the, the applicant has filed a four point one. Site plan application that has been accepted for over a year and a half now that was filed at the very beginning of this process. And as I noted earlier in previous, uh, presentations, that the. Sector plan indicated no preservation for this. Site, however it is ranked as essential in the HRI and and the applicant has noted. Uh, their indication to preserve the facade. I don't know if I shared these with you last month. Or maybe it was with the county board, but this is, these are some applicant renderings. Showing the relocation of the preserved, uh, south and eastern facades. To the corner to meet the bill to line, establish a street wall, and then, uh, uh, build a residential, uh, development above. And so. Again, um, just going back to our recommendation. For preservation and relocation to the corner. To meet the bill two lines, and then, uh, staff is also recommending a ten foot step back above the. Uh, historic facade, which is also consistent with the, uh, zoning ordinance and the sector plan. However, like I said, I, I don't know if I can speak to implications of.
Understood.
You know, I, I did note, uh, maybe earlier. The, the parcel assemblage, um, which I believe I have an exhibit here that shows. Maybe kind of complicated to, to interpret, but there's a, a, a lot of different small chopped up parcels on this triangular block. Um, and between the Joyce Motors applicant and the Bingham Center applicant, they've assembled, um, to create a, a, a block that's. Uh, works for their redevelopment program, including the deliver, deliverance of the new tenth road, um, that would cut. East west between Irving and Wilson Boulevard. Um, so I think, um, there could potentially, I can't speak for the applicants, but there could potentially be a ripple effect with.
Yeah.
Not, you know. Preservation Institute, potentially the applicant. Withdrawing their application and. You know, but I, again, I'm, I'm, I can't speak for the applicants, but.
Understood, understood. Wouldn't ask you to, Mr. Wallace, I appreciate it. Commissioner, are we on to comments or are we still just to questions?
I would like to give priority to questions. Um, Commissioner Patel, I see your hand just went down though.
Um, you know, Commissioner Hughes actually took care of my question.
Okay. So I guess we're on comments unless anyone else wants to ask a question.
Um, I, I, I'm just gonna make some comments if you don't mind. Commissioner, where to follow?
Commissioner Patel, uh, uh, you were just a second too slow, so we're gonna go to Commissioner Hughes first, uh, and then, um, Patel and Lantome.
Uh, uh, thanks, and I look forward to hearing what Commissioner Patel and Lantome, uh, uh, do have to say this evening. Um, and and it won't duplicate what I said last month. A, number one, uh, I love that it's enamelled steel panels. I, I'm, me and the Lustron house down the street had a wonderful love hate relationship, so. I look forward to seeing the, uh, uh, steel enamelled panels again. I, I'm at this point again where I, I look at it and for my fellow commissioners, I think it's important to remember, it's important to think about the facts. The applicant chose to hold. I'll use the right words. The applicant elected to defer consideration of their proposal for a year and a half. While staff chose to amend the, uh, a sector plan in the hopes of, um. Of achieving a, a better unified vision across all of the sites. And as we saw with the land ownership parcels, these deals are incredibly delicate when they involve land swaps. And so the urban form that we look at here in, in Mr. Wallace's picture of what may or may not become a. A good building based on the site plan review process and the Historical Affairs Landmark Review Board's comments. We may not get any of it, and that is where I continue to. To sit and and fall this evening with a reminder in my head that. If we allow by right development. And hold off for our belief that we can somehow force a hand of what's otherwise the rights of a Virginia landowner. We end up with a CVS parking lot looking like it's middle of Loudoun. Instead of a better urban form. And so for me, working with, uh, our, our partners, I saw, uh, Mr. Orr, who, who built a beautiful. And so for me, working with our, our partners, I saw Mr. Orr who, who built a beautiful building down the Columbia Pike and they, at the, at the Harris Cedar and, and was, was a great partner in that process. And I know they've, they've done well and they've moved on to, to bigger and newer buildings. But it is something to remember that, you know, we have a development community that works with us hand in hand to build this urban form we, we love and enjoy. And if we want to say in situ here, and the cascades are such that we lose the entire urban form, is that really something to, to, to live for? Is that something we really want? And, and it's not for me. And so I don't think I will also support the in situ, although for anyone who wants to think about it, if you want to do in situ, you've got to give and take, which means you've got to be willing to accept higher heights here above the regular. And then you have construction form issues with how they construct it, and these are the cascading effects. And so with that, Commissioner, we all yield and look forward to my fellow commissioners' comments. But for me, I'm still, so I'm still at the in situ is, is just not the case here. But do look forward to having the wonderful comments of HLRB bring forth these, these, you know, beautiful designs and again, the illustrious steel enamelled product of the 1950s and early 1920s. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Patel.
So I, you know, I, I appreciate Commissioner Hughes's comments. I, I recognize many of them from, from our meeting from last month. He'll recognize many of mine that I'm going to provide now as well. I, again, I feel like it is a, you know, I don't think that we get to be placed in a position where we have to accept what somebody is saying that they're going to do because they're a developer. And if we don't do it, then there's some by right option. I think that it is our responsibility to ensure that we are providing guidance and making recommendations on what is in the community's best interest. And, you know, tonight we heard several times in several different spaces, Commissioner Giren, Commissioner Schroll talked to us about what our responsibilities are as a planning commission. And I don't think that that means that we yield in, in times when, when we have clearly said in other documents what it means for historic preservation. There is no question, there is no question that what is happening here and what is being proposed is not historic preservation. I, I pulled up my detailed notes from the last meeting and I want, you know, I wanted to, as best as I could, you know, ring true the words of Commissioner, former Commissioner Morton. But as she said, you know, th- this is, if we don't get it right here, then we are always just essentially mitigating damage. And this is our opportunity to get it right. When we say that this is historic and it needs to be preserved, it needs to be preserved. And to use Mr. Orr's comment, while this may be a beautiful building here, I mean, we're talking about facadeectomy and we're talking about, as he said, refurbishing parts of this. And that's not what was intended. So I will, I cannot agree to anything less than our, than the motion that was initially passed, initially proposed by Commissioner Morton. And that was passed unanimously by this board, by this commission. So I continue to stand in the space that I was last month. I think that the comments that we heard tonight on historic preservation continue to ring true. And, and, you know, if it is something that goes down the way that it goes down because that's the way that there's options by right, I guess so be it. But I don't think that that means that we don't continue to stand for what is right. And that is if something is designated as historic, then we must take all options and alternatives and put them on the table. And as Commissioner Sarley said, look at creative spaces to try to figure out how we can get it done. Thank you.
Commissioner Lantelme?
Commissioner Patel was very eloquent, eloquent and has said much of what I was going to say, as did actually in many ways, Commissioner Hughes. If she was not going to re-raise former Commissioner Morton's motion, I would have done so. So I'm gonna be telegraphing right now that I will be supporting that. I want to plant a flag here. This is essential. It is a site that is now deemed essential. What's the point of even raiding things if we're not gonna take it seriously? I am totally sympathetic with, with the developer here who wants to maximize this space here. A parking lot is not the highest and best use here. But at the same time, it is being listed as essential. It is something we need to have. Our sector plan did not contemplate historic structures when it was originally written back when. So we have a gap here that there was no guidance for dealing with these historic structures. Commissioner Hughes is right. There should be the give and take in that if we're, if we're serious about preserving this, then we needed to push height higher to allow the density that's necessary for a site like this, which does need density. But in order to preserve it with the open space around it, it is going to require creativity and it is going to require us going outside of what literally is the zoning box that we otherwise have here. And we're not doing that. We have to be looking at all of our essential rated sites throughout the county and make sure that, that whatever the zoning they're in will enable a property owner to both preserve it and use it in situ with adaptive reuse, of course, but to have it be there and be essentially, be essentially what it, what we, what it is now. We're just not doing that here. And I would, as I said, I will be voting for whatever motion Commissioner Patel raises on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. Commissioner Steinberger?
And I apologize, there's a very sparky dog now. But essentially, I agree with everything Commissioner Patel and Commissioner Lantelme have stated both very eloquently and I, I think it really comes down to, we have created a register of historic places. This is in the highest quality of, you know, we didn't, we didn't put that many things in the essential category. And to say that that doesn't matter, it, I don't understand if we don't preserve this or if we don't fight for this, what's the point of that register? I just don't understand. So I, I agree, we need to have additional flexibilities and I agree that we need to consider, if that means conditioning, considering additional density through height, I, I think I'm open to that. I, I think that we're not seeing an interest in being able to speak creatively or think creatively about this. And I don't think that we've really pushed it to the point where we're ever going to get more creative solutions. So again, apologies about the dog and thank you.
My apologies, just taking some notes. Commissioner Bagley, thank you, Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I will, I'm very supportive of Commissioners Patel, Lantelme and Steinberger's comments just now. And if we're going to have a historic preservation program, we should be preserving stuff. If we decide that it's more important to allow developers to maximize the space that is available since it's in unlimited capacity anyway, then we go with that. But at the moment, we have this program and we should be preserving it. And, you know, this is one of, what, 10 or 11 in this category in the entire county? And it's just very disappointing when we get to conversations like this. And and I understand, we want the developers here, we, we have a vibrant community, we want to continue it that way. But it just, as I said, last time we spoke about this, there's gotta be some more creative solutions here so that we can get the best of both worlds. But again, if we have a program, we should be defending it. We should be continuing it. If we aren't gonna do it, then we shouldn't have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. And I just, I, I was, I was hoping not to speak, but I, I feel like I have to because I, I can't agree more with what, what all the commissioners, Commissioner Steinberger, Commissioner Bagley, Commissioner, just the, the essential means essential. And, I mean, look at this top right photo here. I think all of us would rather see a beautiful plaza here that being a one-story gorgeous restaurant attached to a, a very tall multi-story building if that meant preserving in situ. And what we're stuck with those community is that that's not where we got to when this first ordinance was, that's not where we are today. And so I hope my commissioners, so I, I think it's incredibly important. I said, I do mean that, essential means essential. There are buildings on that commercial register that if you tried to tear down and did, I, I, I dare not think of the political consequences. I mean, the cinnamon draft house is listed on there as well. Others are listed on there as well, the, the post office. There, there are some really gorgeous buildings. This building also could be, I mean, you can see it there too. The problem is, we, the filing was a year and a half ago. We have worked through this process without that mentality of we are willing to do everything it takes to preserve this and then we're stuck here where we are today. And I, I, I hear all my commissioners on it. And I think that's, I think that's the more important thing to make the motion this evening. We made the motion at the beginning of this process at the RTA. The board chose not to, although it chose to do other things. And so how do you communicate to the board that we all agree on one simple thing, which is essential means essential? And, and I think that a more appropriate method of, of motioning on this, given that I don't think that, you know, as staff said, you'd have to change the, the RTA, would have to be re-advertised. The, the more appropriate motion is to have a beginning in the process of, of not only, as we heard this evening, you know, advocacy groups, HLRB being one, although they are statutory, are separate from things and, and really getting down to defining, hey, these are, are, are no tear down buildings in this community. And by the way, if you touch them, we're willing to give out a lot of other things to keep them just the way they are. And, and that's something we should do. And I think that's a very appropriate mechanism. I think this is an appropriate site to bring that topic to the conversation. I just think we should all think about that as how we communicate to the board effectively. What we all agree on, which is essential does mean essential. But my, as I said, my point why I'm here to where I am today is because of the choices we've made over a year and a half ago that led to where we are here. And I would more than welcome the support of, of a review and essential categories, but it is a function of, I'd rather have the urban form that I think we will get through the process we've outlined now than the by right options that would be laid before us on our feet and that have happened just down the street in the form of, of a, of a Winchester-based CVS being placed in what could otherwise be an amazing urban forum. So with that, thank you, Commissioner Weir, and I look forward to motions.
I have a question for staff. Commissioner Patel, if I can jump in ahead of you. If you have a question, you raise your hand first. You're not raising your hand. Has staff, this is just please for, just jog my recollection maybe. Has, have, has staff presented or has anyone presented any art or language about how the should, should there be an option in the sector plan indicating in situ preservation of that facade? What might or could be done with the land that is currently a parking lot? What, if any, uses might be envisioned? Mr. Wallace, I'm guessing the answer is that that has not been considered, but if it has been, you know, I would appreciate the reminder.
No, you're correct. That has not been considered or has been included in the plan update.
Thank you. Over to you, Commissioner Patel.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I was on mute. So to, to go back to Commissioner Hughes's point and also to focus on your comment just now, the, what I heard and I was really intently listening to Mr. Wallace's response to Commissioner Steinberger's, I say this jokingly to her, out of turn question, was that the, the only reason why we are not having this conversation is because this, this application has been pending for a year and a half. I mean, that is the reason why we don't have further study, further, further review, further discussion, further, you know, opportunities for creativity. And, and that doesn't sit comfortably for me. I don't feel comfortable saying that we are not going to protect the, the essential status of this particular site because there's been an application pending for a year and a half. That, that's not okay for me. And so, you know, for me, if that means that, and, and I, I will ask staff to kind of direct me here, but if that means that I have to vote no on the, on the underlying motion to be able to put this back in front of the county board to advertise this, and if they say no, great, there are elected officials. And as, as Commissioner Hughes has said, if that requires public outcry here, then so be it. I mean, you know, in this space, I think we have a job to do, and that is to present the county board with our, our position on this. And that position is, this is essential. It's been deemed essential. It needs to be protected. And additional opportunities to study, review, figure out what else we can do to make, to, you know, to kind of creatively utilize this space in a way that meaningfully protects this particular, the, the, the facade in C2, then we need to do that. But it doesn't seem like that's been done. And, and every question we asked in the last hearing and this one seems to point in that direction. And that is fundamentally my, my issue in this space. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley.
Thank you, Chair Weir. I'm just gonna jump in and reiterate a little bit of my thinking on this. And, and I'll, I'll start with a little bit of a personal anecdote where I've been involved in a project where we're doing an air rights development over a functioning train station. And we're essentially not allowed to shut down the station while construction is afoot. So I think the point being here that we're working around or developing a design or coming with some sort of proposal that incorporates this historic preservation building, whether it becomes a park, whether it becomes an enclosed space, whether it becomes part of the lobby. I mean, there's just, I just cannot iterate, not how easy it is, but how accessible it is. There's just so many options and so many ways to do this. Yes, it's a little bit more complex than the sort of typical urban form. And, you know, Commissioner Hughes reacting to that a little bit too. I think, yeah, the urban form, you know, can also be addressed through design. I mean, again, like none of these are not, as Commissioner Patel was saying, there isn't a dichotomy here or a sort of mutually exclusive option that one cannot happen if the other one is to occur. So I just really want to iterate, this isn't that big of an ask since it's an essential historic. And if we're saying it's essential, it's essential and we've already covered that. I think the other thing that I want to say also, and we keep talking about the contaminated site, you know, yeah, absolutely. It's, and perhaps this is one of Commissioner Hughes' trade-offs. We, you know, as a community, invest on cleaning up the site to turn it into a park or whatever ends up being. But either way, the contamination's can, it's part of, it's already embodied in the cost of development, if I understand that correctly. So to sort of tease that out and say that historic preservation is related to the contamination of the site is a little bit, I think, in my opinion, not true. I think that's it. But otherwise, I, I, I think, yes, if it's an essential site, it's an essential site and it ought to be essential. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. Are there any other commissioners who want to speak on this item?
Commissioner Weir, so my only question is, I do plan on introducing a motion, but I guess I don't necessarily understand, and I asked my fellow commissioners to help me here. Does it mean that we have to re-advertise everything or, or ask the, ask the county board to make this recommendation, to amend the sector plan for this purpose? Or just advertise this particular portion? And maybe, and Commissioner Hughes may have the answer.
I actually want to. Yeah, I want to go to Mr. Wallace on that specific question and then come back to Commissioner Hughes and Steinberger.
Yeah, I believe that upon a recommendation from the commission this evening to the county board, that they would have to re-advertise the project for this historic preservation pending motion that we're hearing about.
The, the full project, the full sector plan, right?
I think the.
That's an excellent question. Mr. Wallace, were you about, and I've, I see Ms. Smith's camera light up too. I think you were about to opine on, or to, to think about whether or not it could be limited to just the site. And I'll, Mr. Wallace, I'm gonna recognize you if you want to defer to Ms. Smith or, or answer them in, in turn. That's up to the two of you.
I'll defer to Ms. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And thank, and thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace, and thank, and thank you for the question. Um, I, I think we as staff understand, um, the interest of the planning commission to have, have the, uh, consideration of the building preserved in situ. So I think make your motion and we will continue to consult with the county attorney's office after this call. I think that, um, the board could take this up as further advertisement of the historic preservation piece, that they would not necessarily have to re-advertise the entire plan, but, um, I think we would want to consult with the county attorney's office on that. Um, and we would probably yet again, need to think about what additional changes that may lead to with regards to the maps that again are codified in the, in the zoning ordinance. So.
And I, I guess that, that then puts us in a little bit of a predicament, because if we've done it wrong, I wouldn't intend to support the plan, the sector plan, if there was not this attendant motion, right? And so then if I'm, if we've not done it properly and it required an advertisement, I wouldn't necessarily want my vote to have gone towards approving or the making the, approving the motion to recommend the approval. I guess I would need some conditional language, and maybe that's, maybe I've now talked myself into another motion. I would, I would require conditional language on the original motion.
Say that one more time, Commissioner Patel, and then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Steinberger.
Yeah. So, you know, if, so what my concern is, is that there has been no, um, RTA or, or there was no advertisement on this particular issue of the historic preservation is what I'm hearing from Mr. Wallace. And so if that is the case, then it seems to me that there needs to still be an advertisement on this particular issue. And it, it, I, I don't know if it's something that could be done just on the issue, or if it needs to be done on the plan in, in kind of toto with this particular issue, um, specifically, um, highlighted, you know, you know, in addition to the fire station, this historical, um, preservation issue. So if we were to vote today on the underlying motion on approving the sector plan, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, yes, I approve the sector plan without some conditional language saying my approval is contingent on, um, you know, the, 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 this particular recommendation. Because, you know, if we were to vote, if, if that particular motion saying that the, the planning commission recommends to the county board that it directs staff to blah, 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 on this, um, you know, in situ motion, and we're wrong procedurally, I don't want the underlying mo, my vote on the underlying motion to carry. Because I will vote no on that. Right? Like, I think some of my, my colleagues would, if this motion fails, they may not vote yes on the sector plan. Does that make more sense, Commissioner Weir?
Commissioner Schroll, I think that that's gonna be something you might have to give some thought to in how you phrase your motions, or perhaps Commissioner Patel, um, uh, I think that we've entertained the concept of sort of springing motions in the past and contingent, uh, contingent motions. Um.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Schroll, I'm gonna come back to you after I get through Commissioner Steinberger and Bagley to sort of, um, to, to give us any thoughts on, um, what a motion might look like. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Steinberger first.
Oh, sorry. I just assumed you were
A motion might look like, but, uh, just any procedural thoughts on
And I apologize. I just assumed you were coming to me first, only because you said my name first, so I, I put my camera on. Um, I, I think where I'm struggling a little bit, and I appreciate what Commissioner Patel has said, is that with, with the contingency with us, with the lack of clarity until we've consulted with the county attorney's office on how much of a re-advertising there would need to be and could we do it partially? There's confusion as to what the end outcome would be. Is the entire sector plan able to go forward? Is just, you know, holding back just one piece of it? Um, and I, I think that's where the confusion is and where kind of the need for maybe contingency language is. Um, I, I, I think what I'm struggling with a little bit here is that at last month's meeting with a request to advertise, we did, you know, we, we, we put forth that the motion did pass, you know, with regards to, you know, the planning commission recommend, you know, recommends the retaining the site in the Joyce Motor Site in C two. And that passed, that was argumentation that went to the county board, and the county board clearly said, or, you know, by their actions that they're, you know, that was not how they were going to advertise this. You know, staff has not changed their mind, and whether county board was swayed by staff or something else, you know, fine. Um, and I, I guess procedurally, I'm sort of in this, are we just creating a loop, um, of, of sort of where, where would this go? Um, so I, I guess maybe this actually is a question that if the motion to, the motion, the underlying motion fails tonight, overall, whether, you know, because enough people don't support it without having the historic preservation in situ as part of that recommendation, what happens next? Is that something that staff can, can answer for me? I just, I, I want to know kind of like procedurally how the dominoes fall, if you will. Thank you.
Commissioner Schroll, at this point, I am gonna go over to you because I, I want you to, to, um, no, I'm not gonna go over to you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to be thinking about the possibility of splitting the motions into the, the portions of the staff recommended motion that cover everything but this site, uh, and the, the, the Joyce Motor Site and the, and, and motions, making recommendations for the site alone. I'm not deliberately not putting you on the spot to respond to that now, partly because Commissioner Bagley is waiting, and partly because I want to give you a second to chew on it first.
Commissioner Weir, can we just have Mr. Wallace go to the slides with the, uh, proposed, recommend, the staff recommendations so that we can just kind of see them?
That's a very good idea, Mr. Wallace. Could you do that, please? Uh, while Commissioner, while I go to Commissioner Bagley.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Um, I agree with Commissioner Patel and also, uh, Commissioner Steinberger. And I'm grateful that Commissioner Patel is going to put forward again the same motion that we had, or at this point, perhaps slightly edited, that we had last month. I was trying to figure out during the day how I would do that, so I'm glad somebody else thought about it. But no, I am struggling with, if this isn't answered as part of our deliberations tonight, I would struggle to be able to vote in favor of the entire site plan because of this one thing. So it, you know, and I don't know how people will end up voting, but, um, you know, I do recognize that this is an opportunity for me, uh, in my role here to, uh, make a statement about the importance of some of these things that we, you know, have to deal with on a daily basis as a planning commissioner in the county. So, you know, any, anything that we can get towards helping what my commissioner, my fellow commissioners had said just earlier, because that's where I'm at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Commissioner Hughes.
All right. I'm gonna try to help this conversation along, um, and, and maybe Commissioner Scholl could jump in too, if he wants to. So, uh, this is to my earlier comment, and I think for Commissioner Patel and, and others to think about. Uh, when you put, this is from the guy who likes to put forward motions that frequently the county board doesn't like. When you make the motion, we made the motion at the RTA to include it. The county board saw it, chose not to change the RTA. Uh, so this RTA and this sector plan has zoning ordinance goes amended. Now, the sector plan itself, staff can tell you, may have the ability, depending on your interpretation, to be amended at the, at the county board. The zoning ordinance definitely doesn't. You have to re-advertise. And as, as Commissioner, uh, Schroll and others have done, they've spent years, you know, and as we saw with just the one change to the, the addition of 1.6, uh, it, it's all interrelated. So when you're thinking about how you want to go about this, I encourage everyone to, to, you know, question, you know, what is the goal of your motion? Is your goal of your motion to make the point? Is your goal of your motion to, uh, affect change? Is your goal of the motion to change the future? Uh, and so how you do it is entirely your choice, but just remember, uh, there are interrelated with the, with the sector plan tied to the zoning ordinance amendments. And, um, you, you really do want to think about what is the goal of your motion and then, uh, what effect you want to do, especially this. We've gotten out of practice with the RTA. It used to be we heard everything twice. The first time was the RTA, which if anybody was old enough like Commissioner Scholl, maybe Commissioner Gearing and myself, that was the action, folks. That was our big, long discussions. And we got to this point where like, oh, well, okay, we have these few nitpicky items we'll go after. Uh, we, we've gotten out of practice with the RTA. We're getting, seems to be back into the heading of that art practice. So, uh, I'll let that go and let everyone sort of chew on that one, but that's where the comments I'll have on that to think about. If it were me, and, and that, I just don't know. It's easier for me, but hey, not everyone likes to be me. So. That Commissioner Weir, let Commissioner Schroll go if he wants to opine more on the subject.
Yeah, um, yes, Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and from Mr. Hughes. So a couple of things to weigh in here on, um, given that the Clarendon Sector Plan is largely codified, um, in the zoning ordinance, unlike other, uh, sector plans. I mean, that's why we're here, right? We have to amend the maps and other things. There, there's less opportunity to kind of amend things at the last minute without kind of re-advertising if it's outside the bounds of what's advertised. If it's within, if it's within those bounds, you know, then we, then the county board can do that. But if it's outside, it cannot. Um, something to think about. You know, if folks, it sounds like folks are certainly passionate about a number of these issues that we're gonna have amendments on. I think it doesn't hurt to make the motions and see kind of where we land and, you know, determine where we go from there. I mean, kind of broader strokes, I mean, we are advisory to the county board. The county board doesn't have to take our, any of our recommendations. There are certain instances where, um, we need to make findings and things like that are called for in state code. This is not one of those instances. And so, you know, the things will keep moving, even though, um, you know, if the board disagrees with us. Back to your, um, ask Mr. Chairman to have me think about separating out motions. The way that the motions are, at least, or the recommended motions from the, um, the county manager, it's gonna be tough to separate them out in a way that, um, limits them to this site, because there, we have the first one that has, is the attached resolution for the updates to the sector plan itself. The second one is about the club amendments. So that's pretty all encompassing. And then the third one is, you know, ordinance amendments, map amendments, et cetera. So, um, that would be kind of, I think, tough to do. There are some ones I think that Commissioner Patel and others might be envisioning, putting forward that are more specific to this matter, that's being discussed. But, um, you know, aside from that, and perhaps some of the ones that have been circulated that are, that are more related to, the fire station elements, um, I don't know how else to chunk it.
So Commissioner Schroll, let me, I, I'm, I'm going to you in part because of your, your sort of parliamentarian, uh, uh, role, historically in the commission, but also because this is, um, this is your, your stewarding this project. Before I go back to you, Commissioner Patel, I just want to pose this question. And I know, I know that you might not personally be keen on introducing this motion, so it, it might fall to someone else to introduce it as an amendment. But what would prevent us from, from upending the clause except for those portions pertaining to, uh, RPC 1900, you know, whatever? And then to make, and, and then to, to make recommendations for that site separately? I don't, I don't believe that that would fall afoul of the RTA, because all we are doing is saying we're making these recommendations for all of what's before us, cabinning out this one parcel where this, where the, the recommendations are a little bit more contingent.
So, I mean, I would welcome staff's insight here, but, you know, generally speaking, what you, what you adopt can't be kind of more limiting, or where you're putting, what you're, you know, advocating can't be kind of more limiting than what you've advertised, is sort of my understanding of how, or, or more strict than what you've advertised. And I think what you're suggesting perhaps might run afoul of that by kind of creating kind of more regulations on that one RPC. But I would, you know, welcome staff's comments and feedback here from either Mr. Wallace, um, Ms. Smith, if my, that interpretation is in fact wrong.
Uh, I'm gonna go while, while Mr. Wallace and Ms. Smith think about what or whether they want to weigh in with, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Patel, and then, um, Mr. Wallace, Ms. Smith, come back to you. Of course, after.
So I, you know, when we think about, and I think that we probably should get to motions, um, but I, I, I think when we think about these things, what I would feel comfortable doing, and I know Commissioner Schroll has, um, sent around some more recent proposed motion language with regard to the, um, fire station, as have I with regard to the Joyce Motors, historic preservation issue. Um, I would actually like to, to think about, A, coming under the scope maybe of four motions, where we have the underlying motion to adopt the 22, um, Clarendon Sector Plan. And then a secondary motion that says, uh, or another motion that is Commissioner Schroll's motion on the fire station, another motion on my historic preservation, and then a third motion that says adopt this Clarendon Sector Plan subject to those two more specific motions. And that way, if we have done something that the county attorney is saying needs to be re-examined, then we have provided backup opportunities, because in, in that particular situation, you know, I would vote for the motion that says it's subject to those two provisions. And, and, and feel comfortable voting no on the larger underlying motion, because I would be able to signal to the board that it's not the entire Clarendon Sector Plan that I have a problem with. It is these, these two particular points. So kind of to go to, to Commissioner Hughes's point, there's the one aspect of standing for what you believe in, which is, you know, everything we've talked about tonight with regard to these two particular issues. And then two, communicating to the board something. And I think that both things could be accomplished under this, this path forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. Before I ask Mr. Wallace and Ms. Smith to weigh in on the RTA question, I'm gonna relay an understanding of the RTA limitations that has been, um, that, that I've gotten from, um, the county attorney, albeit for second or third hand, uh, is that the, when we talk about limiting or more or less limiting, what we're really talking about is the greatest or least change from the current ordinance, right? And so, it seems to me that if we make recommendations that, if we make recommendations for a part of the sector plan that are less departing, that depart less from the existing ordinance, uh, uh, than, than what was advertised, we're in the clear. But if we make recommendations that depart more from the existing ordinance, than what was advertised, we're not. Uh, I'm saying that because I want to be corrected if I'm wrong about that. Um, but, um, Mr. Wallace and Ms. Smith, you, you've, you have not yet turned on your cameras, so it may be the case that you don't have anything to add to the discussion beyond, Ms. Smith, your earlier recommendation to make the motions that, that you want to make. Uh, but I, I want to give you the opportunity before we go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Chair Weir. Um, I'll get us started, and if others on, from staff want to, want to chime in here. I think that what Commissioner Patel, um, was saying is certainly, you know, one, one option as well, and, and, um, I don't have any reason at the moment to say that that's not an option. Um, I do think that the point that Commissioner Schroll, you know, mentioned In terms of it being outside of scope could, could possibly be an issue. And again, would have to consult with the county attorney's office. So I think. You know, from. From this side, it seems like, you know, one option that, you know, could be slightly different from Commissioner Patel's would be to support perhaps a motion. You know, under the main motion and amendment to indicate the planning commission's lack of support for the, for the Joyce Motor Site. And to also request that the county board advertise. Advertise the, the preservation option for that site. I guess another option could be simply for the planning commission to recommend deferral. For this evening's hearing and also with that, you could be making a, again, a recommendation that the. Giving that some context and that the county board could, um, that you would be requesting that the county board. Consider re-advertising to, uh, allow for the preservation of the building. And I realize that that's really mostly focused in on the, the Joyce Motor Site and the preservation issue. So I don't know if, um. Mr. Fitzgerald, if you've got anything else further to add to that or.
Thank, thank you, Miss Smith. I, I mean, I think you've, I think you've identified, um. Several, uh, of the more feasible options here, I think, to consider. You know, the one additional thought that comes to mind is, um, as was mentioned earlier in the presentation. We will be, staff will be, you know, based on the board's action, if they, if they, um, act to adopt the, the updated plan. Will be, um, producing the, the final document sort of post-production. So I think depending on the, where the planning commission lands this evening. If it is sort of a, a, a motion with an, you know, an additional detail to. Express that lack of support as it relates to this particular site and given the preservation concerns. You know, going into, obviously, uh, as Miss Smith said, we will, um, confer with the, the county attorney. But I think also between planning commission and, uh, the county board, we as staff could be prepared. To really just further review which pieces, uh, which elements of the plan, uh, might. If the board were interested in deferring sort of action on parts of it or directing staff to further update parts of that to bring back. Uh, you know, we would be, um, prepared to identify what those elements are as we head into, head into the county board. But I would certainly want to, uh, confer back with the county attorney's office just to get a, a final confirmation on the scope question. Rather than trying to, to speculate on that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you both. What? One thing that I've just heard, right, is. That if there were a motion. Saying effectively. The commission. The commission wouldn't recommend the plan at all if the institu facade wasn't preserved. And if that motion were not to pass. It would still go into our letter to the board. Uh, and it would have, I think, almost exactly the same effect as. A five-four vote in favor of adopting the plan. If we knew for certain that the institu portion was off the table. Right? It's. In either case, it's a very strong signal to the board that. A significant number of, of members of the commission. Either do not support the updates. Without the institu portion or would not support the updates without the institu portion. And I'm sort of thinking out loud. On, on approach that I think was very interesting. And I'm just going to stop thinking out loud now. Uh, are there any other? Commissioner Patel, I think is correct that we need to get to motions. Are there any other comments before we do that? Commissioner Schroll, do you have a motion for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do. I move that the planning commission recommend to the county board. Sorry, let me pull this up here. That, uh, they adopt the following elements associated with the Clarendon Sector Plan Update Planning Process. One, attached resolution, attachment one. To the staff report dated March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, to adopt the Clarendon, the twenty-twenty-two Clarendon Sector Plan and update. To the two thousand six Clarendon Sector Plan Attachment Two, to staff report dated. March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, attachment, sorry, attached resolution. Attachment three to the staff report dated March thirty-first, twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-two. To amend the general land use plan, map and booklet attachments four and five to the staff report dated. March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two and three attached ordinance. Attachment six, the staff report dated March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, to amend, reenact and re-codify. Applicable provisions of the Arlington County zoning ordinance. Articles three, nine and eighteen, including maps. Nine point two point five through nine point two point twelve. Attachment seven to the staff report dated March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, is there a second?
Should we make, if I, I do not second, um, but I do have a motion.
So.
We need the second first.
Commissioner Patel, uh, the, the, we need, yeah, the only thing we can do at this point is second it. In order to get.
Second for purposes of us being able to move ahead and discuss this.
Thank you. Uh, so we have, um, a first motion made by Commissioner Schroll, seconded by Lan Telme. Commissioner Schroll, do you? I, I, I think that this gets us into a spot where we can begin. Next step is that, next steps, is that right?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, so I think several of the motions that have, um, been, been circulated. Some of the amendments, I should say, that have been circulated by our colleagues, um, could be considered now. I think at least one of them I would recommend being something that's considered. At the conclusion of the consideration of this, as I believe it's broader than the sector plan and then there's kind of more. Uh, additional recommendations to the county board about, um. Other processes. But yes, Mr. Chairman, this gets us into a place where we can discuss amendments.
Okay, so I, I want to start with. Any amendments on the fire station and then do any amendments on historical preservation.
What about transportation?
Um, I'm going to include transportation with, with, well, let's, this is potentially the easiest one, right, Commissioner Lan Telme? So I'm going to recognize you, Commissioner Lan Telme.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board direct that staff include on map two point one zero. A desired bike and pedestrian connection between Wilson Boulevard and Fairfax Drive. Between North Side Social and the Kirby Garage Sites. Similar to the connection currently included in the Clarendon Sector Plan. But with a bike and pedestrian character rather than an alley character. And furthermore, recommend that staff note the need for a mid-block crossing across Wilson Boulevard at the intersection with the new Tenth Road North.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, speak to this, this language tracks the motion made and passed unanimously by the Transportation Commission last week.
Thank you, Commissioner Lan Telme. Uh, are there any other commissioners, uh, who would like to, um, speak on this motion? Be a second to get my. Being still no hands, um, Commissioner Bagley.
Hi.
Commissioner Gieran.
Hi.
Commissioner Hughes.
Hi.
Commissioner Lan Telme.
Hi.
Commissioner Patel.
Hi.
Commissioner Peterson remains absent. Commissioner Sarly.
Hi.
Commissioner Schroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Hi.
I also vote aye. Motion carries, um, nine to zero. Uh, are there any other transportation recommended, uh, motions? I am going to go a little bit out of order, uh, than, than the usual custom, and I am going to introduce, uh, a, a motion. I, I am going to introduce a motion on. The fire station. Um, and that is that the planning commission recommends that updates to the Clarendon Sector Plan. Remove from the final sector plan, uh, any alternatives, uh, or language. For the county-owned Tenth Street Site that would envision standalone fire facilities.
I'll second that.
Second.
Moved by, um, Commissioner Weir, uh, seconded. Thank you, Commissioner Patel. I, I have, could, um, Commissioner Lan Telme first. Um, I want to speak to this real briefly. As I mentioned earlier, I, I think when it comes to co-location of facilities. There are two very related but very discreet issues. One is whether we think it is acceptable to co-locate facilities, excuse me, whether we think it's acceptable to not collate. Uh, co-locate facilities or even to envision, uh, facilities that are not co-located within. Two fifths of a mile from a metro station. What those facilities are is a related but discreet issue, and this motion very deliberately does not speak to what those facilities are. I know that there are those on this commission that feel like. That we should be prioritizing the provision of affordable housing. I know that there are people on this commission who feel like we should be prioritizing. If for this area, the provision of additional open space. There are certainly other commissions and advocates who, um. Uh, are weighing in on both of those sides and will do so at the board. I hope, suspect and hope. That the one area that we can have a lot of impact here and speak with an unequivocal and unanimous voice is that. Doing nothing or envisioning doing nothing when it comes to co-location of facilities this close to metro. And in twenty-twenty-two, and given the shortage of square footage that we have, that, that envisioning non-co-location of facilities, that that isn't acceptable. That that's the common thread between all of the various positions that we've heard. Just to note then. That, uh, uh, you know, I'm not recommending the two point one seven per se come out. I'm, I'm recommending that what is, you know, I, I'm, I'm moving that we recommend that what is adopted. Be, uh. Uh, uh, focused on this one point. So I'm going to recognize anyone else who wishes to speak on this while I desperately try to find a USB charger for my headset. Uh, Commissioner Gieran.
What's on, Pops? Chair Weir, um. I'm thinking about this motion. I'm not sure I'll support it because I'm concerned that it does open the door to affordable housing on the site. And I don't even like the characterization that some feel there should be affordable housing on the site and some feel there should be open space. What I feel there should be on public land is public uses. Um, and I. I, I want to make sure that that doesn't get recast by anyone on the commission. That's my stand on that. It's in part because that's what we're hearing from the community, but we've battled this issue. And Commissioner Weir, you and I and Commissioner Hughes were on the TJ Working Group years ago, and this was a similar issue. At that point, we lost parkland. It was a parking lot, but it was to build a school and that seemed acceptable. I'm really uncomfortable opening the door to putting affordable housing on publicly owned land. So I'll, I'd like to hear what my colleagues think.
Well, Commissioner Gieran, if I, if I may, I'll respond to that, uh, which is with, with the note that I share your concern. I, uh, more fundamental concern is that so long as the sector plan envisions an outcome. Where, um, the default, uh, assumption is a standalone facility with the option. Uh, of, of, uh, co-located public facilities. Implicitly then in brackets, should the resources be available? As long as that is the language and the art in the sector plan, what we will get. Is a standalone fire station with no co-located, uh, uh, public facilities at all. That's my concern. And I, I, I think that, I think that, that the ink of the plan needs to literally foreclose. On the possibility of, uh, a, a, a non-co-located facility. Or else, or else we're not going to get anything. It's, it's Aesop's dog passing over the stream. That's my concern, Commissioner Gieran. Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the motion that, um, Commissioner Hughes made last month that we adopted and workshops that was about, you know. Similar, along similar lines about kind of co-location, public facilities on this site. Is it your intention that those facilities of, about you, about which you just spoke be public facilities or is it more that it? That the fire station be co-located with some facility and that, that that could also be. As you said, kind of in your introduction, you're kind of, um, agnostic to whether it's housing or some other co-location.
Uh, for my purposes, the latter. I very much hope that the commission. Uh, entertains a motion, um, weighing in on, uh, what our preferred, um, types of co-located facilities would be. Commissioner Gieran, I think this goes to what you were saying as well. I think it would be entirely appropriate for someone to move. Uh, a, a recommendation that the commission recommends that, uh, the, that the fire station be co-located with. Open space facilities or with housing. We should specify what kinds of facilities we think that, that should be located there if that's what we, um, believe. What I am trying to accomplish is only the one thing, which is. Let there not be single-use county facilities. Two fifths of a mile from the metro station in the heart of the RB corridor. Given the climate crisis, given transportation concerns, given the square footage shortage, given that this is an urban part of an urban county. That this is a plan for an urban village. It is entirely focused and limited on to, to that.
Thanks.
Yep. Anyone else who would like to weigh in on this? Uh, Commissioner Hughes.
Commissioner Weir, and I, and I do, I do one hundred percent agree with you in the co-location of. Being, uh, 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 an assumption. I just, I don't, I don't know how anyone can imagine that a fire station roof. Safety concerns somehow keeps it from having a community garden on top, uh, which is our one listed item in the public spaces master plan lacking in the area. I'm kind of in Commissioner Gieran's camp though, after so many years, as I said in the last meeting, public man for public good. I don't want it to be misconstrued, uh, as, in other ways. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Gieran on this one. It's just, it's just. It's just got to be clear. I, I think that Commissioner Schroll and others made it clear earlier, like, we, 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 we want. To tell everyone that they can have an affordable, one hundred percent affordable free building that's lead platinum and, and carbon neutral. It's just not the world we live in. And so we have to live with the trade-offs we have. And so for that reason alone. I, I think we need to be honest with the community about where our preferences are. And for me, I don't think that this plan in and of itself, I saw the staff's, uh, review and they're. In my mind, it already has removed any assumption, uh, that a standalone fire building with a roof does nothing more than protect it from water i- is on the table. And so for me. I, I, I think we need to go further and I look forward to pile some other motions. And for those reasons alone, I, I don't think. I, I think we need to go further and I look forward to place some other motions and for those reasons alone, I don't think I'm going to support this. I'll join Commissioner Giren and dissent.
I, I, thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to call the vote. Commissioner Bagley.
Nay.
Commissioner Giren.
No.
Commissioner Hughes.
No.
Commissioner Lantome.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
I guess nay.
Commissioner Sarly.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
No.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Was on mute. Aye.
I vote aye. Motion fails four to five. Are there other motions on the fire station?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you. Sorry, pulled up here. I moved that the planning commission recommend that the updates to the Clarendon Sector Plan remove the land use alternative for the county owned 10th Street site labeled figure 2.16.
Second.
That's Commissioner Schroll, seconded by Commissioner Hughes.
If I could speak to it briefly, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief here. I spoke to this, I think largely earlier, making this motion, I think for, for two main reasons. As the person who led the LRPC process for this sector plan update, one of the portions of our recommendation that was, was almost unanimous was our opposition to 2.16. And so you know, that was something, you know, while there was people on different sides of other issues, that was something where I think there was almost unanimous support among the neighbors and other members of commissions that, that the lack of open space for that recommendation did not lend itself to what should be proposed on this site. I mean, and the second piece is what I spoke to earlier, which was wanting to provide clarity to to all stakeholders about what could be anticipated when this site redevelops. And by including 2.16, although Mr. Wallace noted that it's not the preferred scenario, it is a scenario that could redevelop along with several other ones. So you could have open space or no open space. And so that does not in itself allow for, you know, clarity here. And so for those reasons, I put forward the motion before you. Happy to answer any questions and I hope to have your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Are there any other commissioners who want to be heard on this motion? In the event that no one else raises their hand, I'll be opposing this. The removal of 2.16 from, from the Clarendon Sector Plan, I believe, would make it even more inevitable that we will end up with a standalone fire facility in, in, in Clarendon on this site. And, and so I can't support it. Any other commissioners? With that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Giren.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Lantome.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson is absent. Commissioner Sarly.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
I vote nay. Motion carries eight to one. Commissioner Schroll, do you have any other motions on the fire station portion? Does anyone else have any other motions on the fire station portion?
I do not, although and I don't believe others do, but my, my colleagues can correct that assumption if it's wrong.
It looks like that's where we are at. Commissioner Patel.
No, I think I might be too early. I actually have a motion on the next point.
I, Commissioner Commissioner Schroll, I believe you do not have any motions on the next point. Is that right? I want to give you deference here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do not. I, I think we are okay to move to the historic preservation motions at this stage.
Okay. Commissioner Lantome.
Excuse me. I was actually wondering whether it might be useful to make a motion that would not include, that would, that would require requests, recommend co-location of public facilities on the fire station site, but not include affordable housing as part of that, which really would be a private usage. I'm sort of, I don't have exact language of it, but given where we stand now, there does seem to be interest by fellow commissioners that there be other uses included as long as they're public uses. That the concern here would be the, would be the housing on the site. You know, I don't know whether to float a trail balloon on that, whether there'd be any other people that have interest, maybe if they put their hands up, but I don't have any, any, I don't have any language right now that would accomplish that because that really wasn't an issue until these two votes were taken. So I'm throwing that out there. If anybody has any discussion or any reaction to that, maybe is the best way to put it.
Commissioner Giren and/or Commissioner Hughes, I want to put you on the spot here.
I always defer to Commissioner Giren because she's far more wiser than I am.
You're just getting tired, Commissioner Hughes, like me. I appreciate the motion, Commissioner Lantome. I'm not sure it's necessary. I'd like to hear what others think.
So Commissioner Lantome, your, your concern is 2.1.8. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, it's essentially that with a standalone fire station, we would of course have park space next to it, which is a public use, which I absolutely acknowledge. But given that there's already a small office building on top of it, we end up, may end up with less than we have now, which seems to me insane, given we're so close to the subway. That's my concern here. I mean, we could have that park there on where, you know, the, on, along 10th Street and then have above the fire station either community garden or tennis court or an APS facility or a county office. I mean, you know, we pay a lot for, for office space in this county for our functions. I would like to have something else there other than simply the fire station because we have, we have air above that fire station that we could use, which has value and not use it seems crazy.
Oh, I totally, I totally agree with you. I think Commissioner Wall, Mr. Wallace, would you mind pulling up the, the, our favorite slide, I feel like for the night? Commissioner Weir, if you'll entertain me, the, the
Yeah, Mr. Wallace, please do.
The four maps, sorry, Commissioner Lantome, you know, my brain works.
2.16, right?
That, yeah, I just think we need, we need the visual in front of us if Mr. Wallace would put them all up because I, I, my memory of the revised one is staff actually heard us last time a little bit loud and clear, although they didn't put a nice garden on top like I asked them to do with maybe a, a few floors in their visual, but they did actually make a slight tweak and Commissioner Schroll might be able to speak or Mr. Wallace, of course, would know the most to the maps, if my memory serves me right. Yep, there we go, the, the, not the maps, what are we, the diagrams? Where they acknowledge, the, the, the term here I don't like in, in figure 2.1.7 standalone fire station because underneath it in dot three, it says potential rooftop public space. Perhaps, perhaps we can make a motion, Commissioner Lantome, that makes that less of a choice. And I, I'm sorry to say, I heard like staff mentioned both tonight and the time, every time about security and safety. I'm sorry, folks, like the fire station is the safest place in our county fundamentally. It's like the only place you're allowed to drop off a baby and not go to jail for abandoning mothers. I mean, it's literally the only safe place in our county guaranteed.
Right. Okay. How about this?
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just note that these bullets are clearly just for the PowerPoint presentation, the, the sector plan text that's been proposed in attachment number two provides additional narrative around this scenario that I feel that should be reviewed if hasn't been already. So it's, there's additional narrative in the sector plan text and attachment number two that, that should be reviewed and not.
Could you read some of that or put it up on the screen?
Mr. Wallace, did you leave yourself wiggle room to get out of doing anything on the roof?
No, so there's, let me see if I can, we had some 3D model images of the standalone. Let me see if I can get to those. Again, we did identify potential opportunities for public space above the fire station. And again, I did, I did mention earlier the some considerations.
Nothing enclosed, nothing that, that requires a person to stand there, not a small space like the ones up in Charidale. We got, we've heard you.
Right. I mean, I'd rather it reads something like public, public space
Here we go.
Above the building. I mean, something like that. Public use of public building rather than public space.
So the slide here shows the plan view on the left and the 3D view on the right. And again, the, the standalone option.
You see, we're still not go using the height, even with that.
And the commissioner will tell me, this is something that I would definitely be able to support. My, my concern remains that, that what this shows is a default assumption of a standalone fire station with potential alternatives for co-located, options for co-located uses. As long as that is the default assumption, that is, as long as that is a default assumption in the sector plan, it is probably what we will get. And it can't, it, it, and, and even if it's not probably what we will get, the odds of it being what we will get are unacceptably high. We have to, the, the only options that people should be able to point to in the sector plan are for this, for this, for this site should be options that are, that, that have co-located facilities that are not standalone.
Yeah, I would rather than say co-located public uses above the fire station.
Yep, I could support that.
I'm trying to see if I can pull up the text from the plan if that's helpful. Since that's item number A, that's up for adoption. Just bear with me for a second.
Commissioner Schroll, I know you've got your hand raised too.
Yeah, I believe it's
Mr. Wallace is searching.
Yeah, I believe it's on page 15 of the draft text if people want to see, you know, follow along. And while Mr. Wallace brings it up and then Mr. Lantome, if you make a motion along these lines, I know we're kind of just talking about it at this stage. This is more in line with what we adopted last month and it's something I could support as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Lantome.
Yes.
Perhaps something to the effect of the county board directing the county manager to remove options other than a default position that public facilities be located above a constructed fire station. There was presumptive that there has to be something above it.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to do, is have something that there will be included with any new fire station will be other public uses a co-located above the, the fire station. Should I make a motion along those lines?
I have the, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Mr. Wallace, yes, please.
I just have the language that I'm going to pull up on the screen that's in attachment number two on page 15 of the draft text. If I can zoom in here. So there is flexibility, as I mentioned numerous times. If the, in the event of a suitable new fire station cannot be acquired, a new station could be built on the current site collated, co-located with housing development that prioritizes calves using, utilizing the entire site. If the county is not successful in co-location of housing above and adjacent to the fire station, the county could pursue a land or I'm sorry, a standalone station that meets fire department operational requirements while providing opportunities for public space, figure 2.17.
Right, that's, I'd rather make it stronger.
That's the rub, yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see, I, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm talking out loud here, so I'm, I'm not even writing it down or even have the pen set. Oh, here's my pen. You know, I, I moved that the county, I, my motion would be, I move that the planning commission recommend to the county board that the direct staff to include in include on page. What, what is this page, Brett?
Commissioner Hughes, you had a phrase that, okay, sorry. My apologies, Commissioner Lantome.
Yeah, that was page, what was it, Mr. Wallace?
It's page, page 15 of attachment two.
That on, that on page 15, attachment to language be added that will require the co-location, co-location of other public uses above the, above any fire station that is rebuilt on this site.
Did anybody type it? Can we get it up? I'm sorry, Joe. I, I, I really was supportive. I just want to make sure we look at it and.
I'm, I'm typing it and we'll circulate it to the commission.
Thanks, James.
Thank you, Mr. Schroll.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is Matt Pfeiffer. I actually was able to type it out so I can pull this up on my screen.
Oh, oh, I think I just beat you to it, Mr. Pfeiffer. Commissioner Patel, you had your hand raised and, and Commissioner Lantome, is this an accurate transcription of the motion?
Um, yes.
I, I just had my hand raised to, to, to say that second part that will require the co-location of public uses above any fire station. But I, I don't, you know, I, does this require this page 15 attachment to reference? Because I think that it probably is sufficient to say that the planning commission recommends the county board, you know, direct staff to require the co-location of public uses above any fire station as we build on the site.
I, what the way that I would
Plan would, would require it.
Commissioner Patel, the way that I would go about that is to seek unanimous consent to add language that, so that it would say that on page 15 of attachment to, or direct staff that on page 15 of attachment to and elsewhere that language be added.
I agree. I think it'd be a promising addition as well.
Okay.
And elsewhere as, as, as relevant.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I feel like it, that's, that's probably adding more language than needs to be there. It just directs them to require the co-location. I don't think it should say page 15 and elsewhere.
I, I, I agree that it could be soup, soup, it could be extra. On the other hand, it's, it's helpful to, it's helpful to signpost where the language is that we're concerned about. I think that, I mean, Mr. Wallace's point was that we shouldn't be responding, our, our recommendation shouldn't be responded to a PowerPoint. uh, responding and our, our recommendation shouldn't be responding to a PowerPoint. They should be responding to the text that's going to the board. And, and so I, I think that it's helpful to point to the part of the text that's going to the board.
Yeah, but that part of the text is also referring to co-location of housing. So I mean, that text is nearly moot at this point. So that's why I'm saying, I don't think.
It is and it isn't because that, that one paragraph was, that one paragraph referred to 2.16 and 2.17 and the other options as well. Like all, all of the options were in that paragraph.
And we've already, we've already ditched that, that one option by our earlier motion.
Right.
Well, I mean, that's, that's Commissioner Patel's point, but, but like if the county board were to take us up on that recommendation, all it would do is remove the first sentence of that paragraph. It wouldn't remove the part that Commissioner Lattomi's motion is concerned about.
I, I don't, I guess I don't see how if the, if the motion is saying that we're requiring them to co-locate public uses above a fire station, then that would negate any other place where there's contradictory language.
Not following you.
So you're making a specific reference to page 15 attachment to and elsewhere, where, whereas you can just simply say that we're directing staff to, um, or requiring the co-location of public uses above any fire station that's rebuilt on the site. But within the sector plan.
It's probably true.
It, yeah.
Sense to have this reference and then say, and elsewhere.
Is this what you're getting at, Commissioner?
No, I mean, it, it's there, we're talking about fire station four, right? We, we're not going to be able to move fire station four. It's going to be rebuilt at that site. So we're saying, I mean, that, that point is already established. So we're saying that the county board require staff to co-locate public uses above any fire station that's rebuilt. Okay, um, on this, on the site is contemplated in the, in the sector plan, but we're talking about fire station four. I mean, there's no other.
Yeah, I have no objection to this.
Yeah, so this is fine. If you want to put the sector plan in there, you don't, I don't think that this page 15 attachment to an elsewhere language needs to be there.
Uh, so without objection, the, uh, motion will be amended, uh, to read as, as is displayed. Um, any other comments or discussion on this motion? Um, so I'll go down the roll, uh, Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Giren?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Uh, I vote aye as well. Motion carries nine to zero. Uh, are there other motions on fire station? Um, are there any, uh, motions or about, any motions regarding the, regarding historical preservation? Commissioner Patel?
So I have two motions for historical preservation and let me just pull them up. I did send them, send them to everyone. The first one is, um, I move that the planning commission recommend that the updates declared in sector plan require staff to incorporate into the sector plan update full frontage in C2 protection for the Joyce Motors building listed as one of Arlington's essential buildings.
Y'all second.
Uh, made by Commissioner Patel, seconded by Commissioner Lantome. Commissioner Patel, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, I think we've covered this.
I am just trying to find again. I know you sent it, uh.
It, I sent it, um, let me get the timestamp on it for you. Um, it was at nine forty-two. I would, I would send it in the chat, but for some reason I don't have chat, uh, capabilities tonight.
Would probably have to, um, um, snap at you if you did anyway.
That's okay. Put me on the record as doing something wrong.
Why can't I, you sent it around. Why can't I find it?
Um, I'll send it again if you.
Uh, yeah, just send it to, um, yes, send it to Ms. Johnson and Mr. Pfeifer.
Okay.
Um, uh, is there anyone else who wishes to be recognized on, um, the motion from Commissioner Patel? Seeing done, I'll call down, uh, Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Giren?
No.
Commissioner Hughes?
No.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
No.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
I also vote no. Um, motion carries five for. Commissioner Patel?
Thank you. I have, um, so, you know, in light of our kind of procedural conundrum, um, I had a second motion, um, which I thought I had sent to everybody, um.
Well, you did. I saw it. I just don't know what I did with it.
Well, there was a, there was a second one I sent around that utilized Ms. Smith's language about the rejection. Did that, did you guys get that one?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I can't find my own motion.
Uh, I think that I might have it. Commissioner Patel, uh, it's.
Oh, here it is. I move that the planning commission recommend the county board um, reject staff recommendations to the Clarendon Sector Plan regarding the lack of in C2 protection for the Joyce Motors Building.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
That's Commissioner Hughes.
Commissioner Sarley.
Commissioner Sarley, my apologies. Uh, Commissioner Patel, do you wish to speak further to the motion?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll say here is this is, again, this is to try to address this procedural conundrum we're in with regard to the lack of advertising on this historic preservation issue. And so to the extent that the first motion is beyond the scope of what was advertised, I think this one stays within the scope of what was advertised, um, and, and still allows us to be able to inform the county board where we stand on this particular issue.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Steinberger.
So I have a question with regards to that. Is the intention of the second motion? And if possible, we could get it on the screen. That would be awesome because I'm struggling to find it in my emails as well. Um, is the intention that, oh, perfect, asking you shall receive. Um, is the intention that we would be rejecting the entire sector plan on this issue or only the language as relates to Joyce Motors? And the institute for, um, for, um, preservation?
It's just the Joyce Motors part, um, so it's regarding that lack of in C2 protection.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else, Commissioner Steinberger?
Nope. Sorry.
Any, anyone else hoping to be heard on this motion? In that case, I'm going to call down the roll, um, uh, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Giren?
No.
Commissioner Hughes?
No.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Motion, uh, I vote nay, uh, commis-, uh, motion carries five for. Um, are there any other motions on the historical preservation aspect? I'm noting that, uh, the, the votes on these last two motions track, um, uh, it looks to me like the votes on these two motions track perfectly to where we all were, uh, last month, which I guess isn't a surprise. Are there any other motions on, uh, any issue? Uh, Commissioner Steinberger?
Um, Commissioner Hughes, you had floated the idea of a motion and it sounds like you are not going to float that.
Commissioner Weir, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Uh, Commissioner Steinberger, I actually, I think, you know, from our conversation this evening, do intend to make the motion. I just don't intend to make it until after we dispense with the entire Clarendon Sector Plan because it has broader confines, although I do hope it can go along with our letter to the Clarendon Sector Plan if the commission agrees, um, so that it can help inform the board uh, moving forward in ways, uh, hopefully helpful. If you, if that makes sense, Commissioner Steinberger.
It does. I appreciate the clarification and your approach makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Patel?
So I, um, I do have a okay, hold on, baby. I, um, do have a motion because I, I think that there, there has been so much conversation today about these two particular issues regarding the co-location of public um, uses, uh, on the fire station site as well as the Joyce Motor Site. And so, um, on the approval, I guess I want to make a motion to basically say that the planning commission recommend to the county board that, um, the Clarendon Sector Plan be approved subject to the motions that have been passed by the planning, by the planning commission.
That would be an amendment, that, that would be a literal textual amendment to the, to the main motion.
Yes.
Is that correct?
First needs a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That's Commissioner Sarley?
Yeah.
Actually, uh, I'm, thank you, Commissioner Sarley, but Commissioner Patel, do you have text for the motion?
Um, I can write it right now.
So, um, procedurally then, I'm going to, uh, deem Commissioner Sarley's second to be out of order, uh, for want of uh, uh, a properly made motion, um, and we'll come back to it when, uh, once Commissioner Patel has text for us and, uh, uh, Commissioner Sarley, I, I hope you understand that that's just trying to move us along.
No, no, no offense taken.
Thank you. While Commissioner Patel is drafting, uh, this, are there any other, uh, motions or comments that we can tee up?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Schroll?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll just say, I mean, I know Commissioner Patel doesn't have her motion on the floor yet, but, um, what she's intending to do is the way we used to structure motions, which was, you know, the kind of county manager's motion, you know, and the following, you know, amendments. And so I think what she's trying to do is sort of in line with, with the common PC practice and uh, I'll, I'll support it when it comes forward.
And thank you. And I've, I've sent it to everyone. Hopefully it's been received by you, Commissioner Weir.
Um, let me see if, uh, I can. Let me get this posted. Uh, Commissioner Patel, can you just, um, uh, state the motion one more time and then we can give a second?
I move that the planning commission recommend the county board approve the updates declared in sector plans subject to the motions passed by the planning commission regarding the co-location of public uses on a newly constructed fire station and the Joyce Motors Building site.
Um, and Commissioner Sarley?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Patel, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Um, no, I mean, uh, Commissioner Schroll is exactly right. I'm just basically trying to track and fill in the gaps that we may need to fill in since we are in a little awkward position procedurally until we hear back from the county attorney.
I, I, that's appreciated. Uh, anyone else? Um, not seeing any hands, Commissioner Bagley? I'll call the roll, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Giren?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Absent.
Commissioner Lantome?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
I, a motion carries eight to zero.
With what abstention?
Uh,
Doesn't get locked.
It, that doesn't get locked. The, the obsession, just all the, the effect of an exception, of an abstention is to reduce the denominator.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, are there any other motions, uh, before we proceed to a vote on the main motion on the floor?
As amended.
As amended. Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. A hearing done, I am going to, um, uh, call a roll call vote on the, um, motion on the floor as amended. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Giren?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Lantome?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson? Excuse me, Commissioner Peterson is absent. Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Uh, I vote aye, um, motion carries nine to zero. Uh, Madam Clerk, um, other, excuse me, uh, Commissioner Hughes, um, uh, I believe you might have another motion for us then.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, uh, we are, I, I'm just gonna go ahead and read it and then I'll speak to it if there's a second to it. Uh, maybe Commissioner Steinberger will be fast enough to get a second. All right, let's go. Pull it up and here it goes. Should be up, I think I sent it to you, Commissioner Weir, so I'm just reading from it. I move the planning commission recommend the county board direct the county manager to begin a process of reviewing the historical resource inventory and provide clear options available to the county for ensuring preservation in situ for all remaining undeveloped essential properties in the commercial inventory.
Is there a second?
Yes, Commissioner Steinberger. I wasn't that fast, but I'd like a second.
Moved by Commissioner Hughes, seconded by Commissioner Steinberger. Um, Commissioner Hughes, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I do want to speak to it. So i- if, uh, if my fellow, uh, colleagues agree, I, I would ask this be a sense of the commission sort of motion, which follows our, our letter on the Clarendon Sector Plan because I think this uh, sector plan's conversation has, has brought to light this issue. I think the, the demolition, uh, of some recent historic properties has also brought further light to this issue, although those weren't on the commercial side. Um, and I think, um, I, I, I was sincere when I've said to all of you, I, I do agree, essential means essential. Um, a- and it is only the construct of the, the limitations within the law of Virginia that, that makes me, uh, more on the side in this case uh, of, of the county staff position. But I do think moving forward, we've got to be honest with the community. If essential means essential, we have tools available to us and how those tools can be used and perceived are important and we need to have a more broader conversation. Staff can help have that conversation with the county and our neighbors. and our neighbors, to, to tell people the options, if we, if we truly want, you know, what could be as a, as Commissioner Sarly said, you know, the gorgeous vision architects could bring to these sites, we have to be honest with everyone, it does mean compromises in other ways, because it, there is no, you know, cake that's free out there, you know, and it, it is something we have to acknowledge, especially, especially within, I cannot say this enough, we live in the Commonwealth of Virginia, folks, whether you like it or not, we do, and you've got to remember that in everything we do, and so with that risk of, you know, speaking too much, I do think it's, is a, is a an excellent conversation to move forward, I know staff's always crunching resources, Mr. Pfeifer really has already like got my face on, added another dart to my face, but I, I, I still think this is something we could try to get into prioritizing in the county and get it on the list of things that we should be doing, because I think we should, we should be looking at those sites that are out there, and what are we willing to do on each one of them to make sure they stay right where they are, and each one's going to require a different conversation, so with that, Commissioner Weir, thank you for your time, and with your support, I hope all of you can find support for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lintelme, or Commissioner Hughes, I'm sorry, is anyone else would like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Patel.
Sorry, I don't mean to belabor this point, so I guess I'm, I'm just trying to get clarification on what Commissioner Hughes is, is, is asking, is he ask, Commissioner Hughes, are you asking that the county be provided direction as to each individual site? And preservation, what the, what the preservation options are for each individual site amongst those remaining sites on the inventory, is that what you're asking?
Correct, which, which aren't that many, if memory serves me right, there were eleven sites, many of them are, and Commissioner Steinberger, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you're our former HLRB rep, there, I think there's eleven commercial properties, some of them people know, you know, off the top of their head, cinema and draft house here on Columbia Pike is one, and, and what do, what tools do we have in place right now to protect them, what tools can we put in place in the future to keep, protect them? And, and, and what tools can we do to ensure that the owner of them is incentivized not to get rid of them? Because I cannot say this enough, we live in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and so that's the sort of conversation I, I hope that could be had, and the county board, through the county manager, could be the one to lead that conversation, it's not a lot of sites, because it is only those that are the top-tier sites, only those that are commercial, and only those that have yet to go through a developmental process, so.
I didn't, no. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I wasn't sure, Commissioner Hughes was asking me, asked a question, I don't have it in front of me, the number of essential properties that are kind of remain on the register, it is not many, Commissioner Hughes is very correct about that. And I, I guess since I'm now already started talking, I will say that what appeals to me with regards to this motion is that let's put all our cards on the table, if, you know, we've consistently said essential has to mean something, we've differentiated between these buildings, important, significant, whatever, you know, some buildings have been deemed essential. Well, that either means something or it doesn't, and I agree, if it means something, and we're going to prioritize some sort of preservation for those buildings, there's going to be other trade-offs, let's have that conversation, let's have that conversation in the open. Developers deserve us to have, deserve to know where things stand, so that those conversations are had in the open, and they know what the playing field is. So that's why I'm supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger, Commissioner Lintelme.
For everything Commissioner Steinberger just said, that's why I'm supporting it too, this is the very problem that I saw with the Joyce Motors site, is that no one really looked forward to, what can we do to encourage this to be preserved in situ? What did we need to do as a county to go to a developer and say, okay, here's what we're going to give you to make sure this can stay in, stay in situ, and you can still develop this and make what you need to out of it? We, you're right, we have very few essential properties left, it shouldn't be a heavy lift, it will take time to do, but it, it is, it's not an impossible task, given how few are left, so I will be voting for this.
Commissioner Lintelme, are there any other commissioners who want to be heard on this motion? Seeing no hands, I'm gonna go call for the vote down the roll, Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Gieran.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Lintelme.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carries nine to zero, are there any other motions on this item? There being none, this item is disposed, Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item? Thank you, well, well, Ms. Johnson is getting her mic on, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Schroll and to Mr. Wallace, and everyone who participated in the, the process, both on the staff side and the commission side. The Clarendon Sector Plan is going to be a vitally important document in, in moving this neighborhood, this neighborhood and area forward, and and that's because of the work that you put into it, so thank you very much. Madam Clerk, now, would you please call the next item?
Alright, our last and final item, of course, is to do the planning commission business, to approve the meeting minutes of the March seventh and ninth planning commission.
Thank you. Can I get, the first thing I'm gonna do is, is just refer members of the commission to the circulated reports from committee members, and invite questions, should there be any questions, after we adopt the minutes? Can I get a motion to adopt the the initial evening's minutes?
So, Commissioner Weir, there was a, I, I, I thought, I think there may be an error in the March seventh minutes, or an omission on point number, it's the motion, the second motion, there's no, there's no reference to who seconded the motion.
Okay, let me pull that up.
This is on page two.
On March seventh, yeah.
Commissioner Sarly moved the planning commission find the attached ordinance of vacation to vacate, et cetera.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly, the, the vacation to vacate one, there's no reference to who seconded that motion.
Alright, I can, give me a moment, and I will find my notes to see what I have there. Unless someone beats me to it.
Where are we?
On page two, the middle of the paragraph, right af, right, the second motion carried ten zero.
Oh, okay.
The reference to who seconded the motion is missing.
Oh, okay.
Alright, this is the motion on the vacation.
Yes.
And while we have the break, I like the fact that our meeting minutes now have our recess time, I find that to be very amusing.
And why is that amusing?
Because I would like to have a record for when I was let out at like two AM or one thirty AM, but I know you do too, Giselle.
I will not.
The motion was, the motion was seconded by Commissioner Bagley.
Or anymore, there's one typo I could call attention to, Ms. Johnson, on committee reports for LRPC, there's a double E in engagement, should be just one, take a quick look.
Thank you.
For the ninth?
Yes, for the ninth.
Okay.
Right, so for the seventh, it was, you've got, Ms. Johnson, you have that it was Commissioner Bagley, who was the second, and then you've got the double E typo on, on the ninth. So can I, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt, to seek unanimous consent to adopt the minutes of the March seventh hearing as amended?
Second.
Well, someone needs to seek the unanimous consent.
I seek unanimous consent for the, to accept the minutes of the, the March seventh and March ninth meeting minutes. Subject to the changes we just discussed.
I object, there's one other edit on March nine, which is we would normally, on page, I guess it's page two, there's the, the motion that made by Commissioner Morton, seconded by Commissioner Patel, and it's seven to four vote, and we would normally list out the a's and a's there, or at least include who present voted no. I believe the no votes, as they were this evening, were Gieran, Hughes, Schroll, and Weir.
This was on the, this was on the, the RTA for the Clarendon Sector Plan, Commissioner Schroll?
It is correct, yeah.
And it's on the, it's on Commissioner Morton's motion, correct?
Yes. I can also just make a note of this and, and send it to the, to Madam Clerk as well.
If you wouldn't mind, please, thank you.
I would absolutely not mind.
Okay, thanks, James. And this is on March ninth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yes, I, I concur that the, the objecting votes were Gieran Hughes, Schroll, and myself.
Maybe I want to change my vote now. I'm just joking.
Not gonna happen.
Commissioner Lintelme, do you want to seek unanimous consent again for the adoption of those two minutes?
Yes, I see, yeah, I seek unanimous consent that the planning commission accept the minutes of the March ninth and March seventh meetings, subject to the amendments discussed at this meeting.
Second.
That objection? Without, the minutes are, the minutes of the March seventh and March ninth meetings are, hearings are adopted as amended. Madam Clerk, are there any staff reports that I believe are, are, are on the agenda?
I do not believe so. Mr. Pfeifer?
There are, hi, Mr. Chair, Matt Pfeifer with the Planning Division, there are no staff reports this month, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. Madam Clerk, are there any other matters on the agenda this evening?
No, that would be it.
Well, then I would thank everyone for sticking with us tonight, and hopefully I can declare this adjourned before it hits eleven oh three, good night, we are adjourned.
Let the record show, eleven oh two.
Good night, all.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, thank you.